Good evening, I'm a second morning.
You first.
Being at Tuesday, November 21st, I'd like to call the meeting to order and may I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Benani, seconded by Mr. Dennehy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to welcome Nancy Holt, our acting town administrator for this evening. Mr. Vanguard is away on vacation, so thank you Nancy for stepping in.
My pleasure, thank you.
And do we have any reports from the acting town administrator this evening?
Just to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Okay, sounds good. And I apologize, I should ask, are there any walk-ins?
Keith Waller, do you want to country way?
Hello?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Grant. Just a question. About four weeks ago, maybe six weeks ago now, the board should have got an email from a gentleman by the name of Steve Ambrosi, or Ambrose, I guess is how you pronounce it. And then Dave followed up with an email on October 26th with-
Dave who?
Dave, I can't think of it, Darty, Darty?
Oh, okay.
This gentleman actually took the time and he's one of the people that if, okay, let me start again. At the beginning of his report that he sent to the board, has everyone seen it, or?
Yes.
It says, I have a copy if you'd like.
It's in your mailbox.
It says he does not believe that the wind turned by noise measurements need to be done again. And he's got a full report on why he thinks so. And he's one of the four people that Dave would have recommended to the group, to the board, to do the study. So I'm just wondering if, I think it's $5,000 a night is pretty much the going rate to do the testing. So are we, we as in you, putting any credence behind this report? Or are we gonna move forward with the testing the way we had discussed?
So the charges right now for the acting town administrator, he's currently putting together an RFP to identify proper firms to come in and do that testing. So it's not that that would be disregarded, it's in the record for us to all review, so it's just a part of the process Keith.
Okay. All right. I was just hoping this would put a clicker into it so that the families up there might be able to get a little relief. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, it's not all of the families, but there's also kids up there that, when I said I agreed with John a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago. I hope you guys know that they don't come home from school in the afternoon, they have to stay at their, at school because of the flicker effect. So they stay at school to do their homework and stuff. And I know if that was my kid, I'd be here fighting every week to try to do something. And where this report says that it's not in compliance, part of Al's whole argument of what it was gonna cost us because we have to pay them so much money, kinda goes out the door. Because now it's not in compliance and, so. I'm hoping the town doesn't waste $10,000 or $15,000 doing this thing, doing this study and then, has the same results come back that they could have had just by doing this, which is a licensed professional too.
We hope the same, we'll see. It'll be considered, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a discussion and vote for the tax classification hearing. Todd Glowick, Steve, wanna come forward too?
I'm gonna have to do that.
Uh-oh, okay.
Because we were treated so badly last time, decided to switch your own.
Fred, I'd rather see from Mr. Glowick.
I would too, I agree, I agree wholeheartedly.
Do the presentation.
Not gonna happen. Fred Avalon, a member of the Board of Assessors. Steve Gard, our chairman, couldn't be here this evening. And of course, we're talking about maintaining the single class rate that we have in the past. And we do recommend a factor of one, once again.
So this is the annual evaluation of the tax rate, just so folks know that the assessors come through, you have to report it to the DOR annually as well. Doesn't look like any shifts have changed. We're at 95.5% for residential tax rate, 95% of our revenue comes from residence and five comes from commercial. Right? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
Nope.
It doesn't look like anything's really shifted at all.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this for 15 years. You know, we could, we could put more burden on the commercial business, but there's no big commercial business in town, so you're gonna be just adding a higher percentage to, you know, small businesses that may put them out of business or cause them to raise local prices, so. You know, until there's a dynamic shift, I think, into the commercial footprint in town, I don't think it makes sense to do it.
Even 10%, we've given 90 something dollar reduction to residential and a $900 and something dollar increase to a commercial. As you said, most of our commercial, small businesses, they're not of a nature that warrant shifting into the commercial base.
And I think the only one that, the discrepancy was Hanover, they're at 17%. Plymouth is at 20%. And Plymouth doesn't do it. And so all the surrounding towns, I'm just trying to find it, just find it, it doesn't make any sense.
Hingham's a surprise, but I think Hingham probably is trying to think about their small businesses in the Hingham Center perhaps, and not so much the shipyard and Dirty Street. Because they can't pick and choose.
Right, right.
So they're in the same category even a little less, so I'm just not gonna change as you said.
We can look at it differently, once that big mall comes into town. Don't say that, because guess what? That'll go on social media for the next two weeks.
Just for the record, there's not a big mall in the records of the town. But thank you.
I won't get the phone calls, it's fine.
Okay, we'll put your number out there. Any other questions?
No, I just really appreciated all of the detailed backup so that we could, for me, looking at it for the first time, it was really useful, thank you.
I just have one, and that's kinda not related, but it is, and that is, Steve, I think, is this, are you gonna be presenting your budget, or is this the last time we have a chance to see you?
Well, I believe I will then.
What's that?
I don't think I will.
I just wanna at least say, you know, Steve, you've been with the town of Situate for, is it 27 years? 29 years. And I know you've been doing assessing six years prior, or eight?
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven and a half.
I just wanna say, thank you. I mean, dedication to this town, your position's vital, you've done a great job, always been right on point with whatever question I've asked, whether it's privately or even in a public setting, and I just wanna say thank you. It's gonna be a loss to the town, a loss to the assessors, the board. And there's always somebody you can, you know, replace, but to fill your shoes, it's not gonna happen. So I just wanna say thank you personally.
And as you know, we talked a little bit before you came in, so absolutely echo John's gratitude to you and all the service that you've given Steve to the town. There's one area of the town, I think, that everyone's always been really confident in, you've been so dedicated and just done so much for us and just kinda fly under the radar, do your thing, and do your thing really well.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
Well, we knew that's the idea, just to do that.
But we thank you for your professionalism and all your hard work, and you will, you will be missed.
For sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, just, I mean, every time I've come to you, you're so knowledgeable and professional that it's really been easy dealing with any type of issue, whether it's forecasting or just local issues, so I appreciate all the service you give to the town. Good luck with your next venture.
Thank you. My king, they asked me how long I'd stay and gave the standard answer of five years, but they added a couple decades. But, you know, I've been fortunate, I've had great support from other departments and the bottom heads and coworkers, and the board of course, and administrations and boards, but most importantly, the clerks and the support staff in the office, and everything that's been established. You know, I could have done my job without anyone else, so that's what I honestly have to thank.
That's nice of you, you hire good people then.
Yeah.
That's nice, you have a nice team there. So congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, with that, do I have a motion?
Would the Board of Selecting vote to approve the residential factor according to Mass General Law's Chapter 58, Section 1A?
Second. Motion by Mr. Dennehy, seconded by Ms. Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thanks for coming in. And we'll get that signed tonight for you.
Great, thanks.
All right. Next on the agenda is a discussion and vote, South Shore Peer Recovery. Jan? Hi Jan, how are you this evening?
Hi. Wow, how are you?
I'm great. So this is for an outdoor entertainment permit, and also to give us a little bit of update of your latest grant.
Yes, exactly. So I'll start with the outdoor entertainment permit. So I'm Jan Kelly, I'm the new center manager at South Shore Peer Recovery. We're located at 50 Cole Parkway in Situate Harbor. I'm not sure how familiar you all are with us, so I'll just give you a little bit of background. We were started by volunteers in 2015, and our organization offers support to individuals who are in recovery from substance use disorder and addiction, and also to their families. We have weekly programs which are free to all and include activities such as Monday night meditation, Wednesday night acupuncture, we do monthly yoga, and have a Sunday family meeting to provide family support. On Tuesday, December 5th, we're having our annual party, our holiday party, and give back at the WPA building here in Situate. The party's open to everybody, so we hope people will consider coming and joining us. We're gonna have music and caroling, cocoa treats and community. The party again is Tuesday, December 5th, from 4 to 8 o'clock. And at our party each year, members of South Shore Peer Recovery bring gifts to give to residents of recovery homes in our area. This year, we're benefiting residents of Angel House in Hyannis, Edwina Martin House in Brockton, and the South Shore Men's House in Quincy. Our community members bring Christmas to these residents who might not otherwise be able to bring, have gifts for their kids. So we do toys and games, as well as, you know, basics such as diapers, towels, bedding, that kinda thing. So tonight, I'm just here seeking approval for an outdoor entertainment permit. We'd like to have some musicians and caroling at the event, and hope that we could do that.
Great. Will the, will they be outside, inside?
We're thinking outside.
Outside.
Yeah, we're thinking outside, so like maybe on that front porch area of the WPA building. Yeah.
And I see that you did notify the butters.
Yes.
Have you had any response from them?
I haven't heard anything yet, no.
Are there any butters in the audience? Okay, 'cause I know we-
Yeah.
Get some concerns about noise around the playground every once in a while, so-
Right, yeah.
Make sure, but if you feel that you've contacted them, that's great.
We did send them a letter and invited everybody to join us, too.
Well, and it's a great event, so.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
All right, any questions with regards to the entertainment permit?
Nope.
Want to motion that, and then we'll listen to the grant update?
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit with the South Shore Peer Recovery Group for a private event held on, to be held on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, from 4:00 PM till 8:00 PM at the WPA building located at 7, Henry Turner Bailey Road.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
God bless.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
Tell us about your fabulous grant.
Sure, okay, so in September of this year, we were notified that we are one of nine grantees in the whole country for a Building Communities of Recovery grant, a SAMSA grant. It's over three years, and it's a total of just over $399,000, which is great. So under this grant, we're gonna be able to expand our programs. The first program we're doing is a telephone recovery support program where volunteers who are in recovery themselves will be trained to make weekly calls to others who need support to connect them to support such as meetings and reminders about activities that are going on that might help them in their recovery. We're also going to offer a 14-week sober parenting journey, and this is for parents who are early in their recovery, who will have activities, discussions, family-style meals, and childcare provided for their kids when they come to these meetings. And it's to really build skills to address unique challenges that are faced by parents in early recovery. At the end of their program, they have a graduation celebration, and then we hope to continue to connect them to recovery support services in their area. Later in the grant term, we're also going to add a program called Craft, which is designed to support and build skills for family members and significant others and spouses who are, who have a loved one who's reluctant or resistant to treatment, and giving them sort of the skills that they need to approach their loved one. Then eventually, hopefully, we will be adding a Craft Parent Coaching Program, so people who've been through the Craft Program would then become parent coaches themselves for others who are going through it. So we're excited about this federal grant, and we're looking forward to expanding. We're also hoping within the next year or two to move to a bigger, more visible location here in Situate.
Excellent. How long have you been in Situate?
So we've had our current location since March of 2015, so we'll be, yeah, yeah, so a couple of years.
And I have a question, how do you communicate the Craft portion of your, that new program? How will that message get out to parents in the community?
Yeah, so, you know, we're gonna put together a whole outreach plan for all of it, we're in the middle of doing that right now in connection with our Grants Program Officer, you know, at SAMSA. But we have a good collaborative partnership with many organizations that are working in the substance use realm, and hopefully we'll be getting referrals from people at those organizations.
I would imagine you work closely with the fax team.
Exactly, yes, Emery, Emery Galvin and the fax team, and, yeah, and all of these resources will be available to residents of Situate.
Excellent. Can't thank you enough.
Yeah, yeah, it's good stuff.
Anybody have any questions for Jan?
No, it's remarkable what you've accomplished in such a short amount of time.
Good, good. Thank you so much for listening to what we have going on.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. All right, is it 7:30 yet? Now, being that it's a, it's not a posted public hearing, so we can go earlier, correct?
I don't know, I'd wait.
Do we need to wait till 7:30?
I'd wait.
Okay, so we'll wait.
I can see if they're in the hall, actually.
I know we're moving a little bit quicker.
All right, we pick off something else?
Yeah, let me see what else is there. The other two are-
Library trustee appointment?
They all have to be here the morning.
Oh, they do?
How about?
Kathy's over here?
Kathy's right here.
They're coming in.
They're coming in?
Okay, all right. Could take Kathy, no, almost, Kathy's us. Had I seen you, I apologize.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Can you guys just scoot over so-
I'm gonna call Sergeant O'Brien up first, so he can tell us a little bit.
Evening.
So being at 7:30, this is a discussion and vote liquor license violation hearing from Village Market. Sergeant O'Brien, who is the licensing officer, and then Mr. McGinnis in the Village Market are here as well, so welcome. So Sergeant O'Brien, if you wouldn't mind giving us an overview?
Yes ma'am, on Wednesday night, October 25th, Sergeant Detective Sergeant Norton conducted an underage alcohol sting. It was a grant that was applied for, through the state by Officer Billings. On this particular night, we had a 20-year-old underage female, and we brought her to a number of retail establishments in the Situate area. At approximately eight, sometime after 8 o'clock, she entered the Village Market on Front Street. She went to the shelf, took down a bottle of wine, can't really pronounce the brand, Chateau or something. At the checkout line, she was asked by the clerk for an identification. The female stated she left it in her car. At that time, the clerk asked her for her date of birth. Instead of walking out to her car like she's supposed to be instructed to, she gave a false date of birth, which put her over 21 years of age. The clerk keyed in the date of birth, which allowed the register to sell the alcohol to her. She told it was 11:99. Detective Sergeant Norton had given her a $20 bill. She paid for the alcohol with that, and I walked out and gave her some change. I walked back in the store, the, she came out to the car, gave me the alcohol, I walked back in. She had identified who the clerk was. I positively identify her from her description. I explained to her, you know, I was in plain clothes, who I was, what I was doing there. And then I asked for a manager, and then I asked the clerk why she would sell the alcohol to the underage female without any physical identification. She said that she looked old enough, in fact, she said, she went on to say she looked old enough to be her daughter's age, which I gather was old enough to purchase alcohol. At that particular time, I explained to the manager who was working what the next step would be, and I left. But if I could just explain one type, one thing, we go by the ABCC guidelines when we do these things, and there must have been miscommunication somewhere along the line. We tell the person that we send in there not to misrepresent their age. If they are asked a date of birth or something like that, they're supposed to exit the store immediately. This particular female did not. She gave a variable date of birth, which made her old enough to serve alcohol, you know, to purchase the alcohol. So, just wanna conclude with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For that. So, Mr. McGinnis, Village Market, did you wanna please represent yourself?
Yes, my name is John Canal, I'm a lawyer in Boston. To my immediate right is Jim McInnis, the owner, and Annie O'Donnell. She was a clerk on station at the time, she's worked at this location for 16 years. This business has been here for 17 years. If I may just, to get into the record, a few questions of the officer, Sergeant.
Well, ask the chair and then we'll decide. Yeah, I mean, if it goes this way-
Yeah, through the chair we can ask, yes.
Okay. Officer, would it be true that the underage agent was asked for identification?
Yes.
And in response, the underage agent did not immediately leave the store, is that correct?
Correct.
And instead, the agent said that she had left her license in the car?
Sergeant O'Brien? Correct.
And then when asked her age, she gave a false date of birth?
Sergeant O'Brien?
Correct.
All right. We do not contest the facts as represented in the sergeant's report, we very much regret this incident. It's very disappointing to both of the people to my right. I'm gonna let Mr. McInnis speak to what he's done since this incident, and Ms. O'Donnell has a statement herself. But with regard to the sergeant's testimony, when conducting a sting, it's the government trying to make sure the private citizen is in compliance. And here, the question was, when the underage agent presented herself with a bottle of wine, they asked for ID. At that point, under the ABCC guidelines, which I can hand up, the licensee passes the compliance check. The licensee, the underage agent is not then supposed to engage in any further conversation, they're not supposed to misrepresent any facts, and that's what happened here. So as a legal matter, I believe that this board cannot find a predicate violation, I think that's pretty much clear under the case law. But that doesn't dismiss what happened, and I would like Mr. McInnis to explain in his own words what their compliance is and how they're gonna double down.
Well, first of all, I can't believe this happened. And, you know, we've, it's been a priority, so not to go ahead and let this happen. It did happen, and I don't have an excuse, there's no excuse. It was a human error, that's not an excuse. I've met with each one of the key holders and night managers, again, okay, and we emphasize that if someone looks 35 years or older, okay, and they don't have an ID, you're making a call, okay, so I mean, we have customers that we have to try and please. At this point, right now in the store, we've had many customers, and I say many, that won't buy cigarettes in the store, that won't buy liquor in the store, because, and they're coming in all shocked, but they refuse to buy any liquor or cigarettes, because, in their words, we torture them with asking them for their ID. And it's costing me customers, my sales are down in both liquor and cigarettes, and they don't want to shop there, because they look 65 years old. And my neighbor, when I told my neighbor about this, he said to me, he goes, "You're kidding me?" He goes, "I'm 65 years old." He goes, "Every time I go in there, they ask me for my ID, it aggravates the hell out of me." And I couldn't believe that this situation happened. We don't always ID every single customer because we know them. I mean, John, a few came in and bought a bottle of wine, we know you, you're in the store all the time, they're not gonna ask your friend ID. And the regular customers wouldn't like to ask for an ID. To not know the person and not have an ID, to me, would ring a bell, and I would not have sold, even if they looked 25, 30, 35 years old, I personally would not have sold it. I expect all my key holders to act the same way I do, in, if they look 35 years old or older, yes, under, no. If they don't have an ID, that rings a bell right from in there that there could be a problem. How it happened is beyond me, I've met with every single one of them since the situation has happened, at least twice, reemphasized it. My son's in the business, he went in and said, "I don't care if they were 100 years old, ask for an ID." And I had to, you know, soften that a little bit, because again, we're losing customers. And it's inexcusable, okay, it shouldn't happen, it did happen, it's a priority in the store. For any of you shocked in the store, you've probably been ID'd, and I'm sick about it, my wife's sick about it, my kids are sick about it. Annie, who was the manager at the time, who was really the one that allowed the purchase to happen, it's really not clear in that report. But Annie, when the person did not have an ID, got involved, and then she said, she gave the okay. She said she looked over 25 years old. And I, Annie called me that night, I said, "Annie, what's the rule?" "I don't know, it's 35, 45." I went, "What happened?" She goes, "I don't know, I don't know what happened." And, and we're all sick about it, and Annie's sick about it, we all are. And it's a priority with us, I really need the beer online license to help pay the bills. The sales aren't up, sales are down, there's a lot of competition, we're winning everywhere. And, you know, I hear what John says about the laws, but we're sick that it happened. Annie's gone to that training class and taken it, along with, I think, any other key holders in the store?
Ray took it.
Ray took it, also the manager. And, you know, sorry isn't good enough, but we're sorry it happened, and we don't want it to happen again, ever. And we're really working hard to go ahead and make sure that happens.
So thank you for that. You were in here, I wanna say, a little bit-
I'll read her thing.
Oh, did you wanna read your statement first, I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
My name is Annie O'Donnell, and I'm the assistant manager at the Village Market. I began working at the store as a sophomore in high school in 1998. It's the only job I've ever known. I'm here tonight because I made a horrible mistake. Our alcohol identification policy at the store is to identify all customers without any exceptions. We then take the IDs and run it through a laptop that has the advanced auto ID detection software to validate, that validates all the IDs. Once this process is complete, we take the birthday off the license and enter it into the register. If someone does not have a license or refuses to provide one, the cashier is required to call manager. As previously mentioned, an underage customer entered the store on Wednesday, October 25th. She picked up a bottle of wine and approached one of our cashiers. At that point, she was asked to provide an ID, she stated that she had left it in the car. I was then called over to her register. Upon arriving, I asked her again for her ID. She then stated that it was in the car. At this point, I asked old she was, she stated she was born on June 14th, 1995. I then proceeded with the sale. I took part in the beverage alcohol training class this past summer. I did our store's alcohol policy, and I understand the incredible risks associated with underage drinking. I made a judgment call that our store policy is designed to eliminate. I had an obligation to this community, and I'm truly sick over the decision that I made.
So thank you for reading that, and I mean, it's obvious that you are very remorseful. And I just wanted to go back with just some history, just to start off the discussion. I mean, I think you know, you know, we had some folks in here last week, too, so we take it very seriously when there is a violation. And unfortunately, the process was a little flawed, so that maybe in your favor with regards to whether or not we can fine you or not, but it certainly doesn't- to whether or not we can fine you or not, but it certainly doesn't change, I think, the tone of the discussion that you might hear tonight from the rest of the board up here, including myself, which is that, you know, we just had South Shore Pier Recovery in two minutes before you, and we're a community that's committed to trying to stop addiction. And we all know that alcohol and drugs are gateways to all of those unfortunate diseases, if you will, that some folks have. So, we take it very seriously that our proprietors take the alcohol beverage laws seriously as well. I mean, obviously, you do. I guess what concerns me is just the ambiguity that is still left on behalf of your staff to determine whether or not somebody is of age or not. I mean, obviously, I'm over age. I wouldn't get offended if somebody asked me, because it's protecting you and your establishment. So, the argument that you're losing customers because you're asking them just to approve their age doesn't really sway me at all. I think people should expect that and understand that you're protecting your business to ask them for that. So, I don't know that we can apply any type of a fine tonight, but I certainly would say that it will be noted in the record that there was a violation, and that if it does happen again, that the consequences will most likely be very serious at that point in time, should the board not decide to do anything this evening. And I'll open it up for any other questions and concerns. I don't know, if somebody would want to start?
We're lost.
You want to go last?
I just have a quick question. Can you explain to me what your process is? You mentioned some laptop, and then I know you have some keypad or something on the register. What happens when I hand you my license?
We take it in, it goes into a laptop that has like a card reader.
So, I'm in aisle two, handing my license. What do you do with it?
We walk over to a laptop.
Over in the main?
It's right along, like, the front of the store, in front of the windows.
Okay.
And it just like, you know, it takes the license, it slides into a card reader, and then it spits it out. And it will give you a green checkmark if the license is valid, and it will give you a, it comes up with like a red exit, like, you know, if someone gives you a fake ID here, it will come up and tell you that it's not, it's not a good license. And then we take your license back to the register, and we put your date of birth into a box that pops up when someone scans beer or wine.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we talked about this 2016, I don't know if it takes back here, where there was another employee of yours that was just putting the numbers in and got liquor passed through so people could buy it. And at that point in time, we told you about this new software package that people are using that is, you can't beat it. You can't fake it. You know, you scan it right at the register, it's taken out of everybody's hands, it detects whether it's real or not, and you just go on your way. And I think at that point in time, that we were trying to convince you to buy that software and implemented it on all your registers. And I'm just wondering why you didn't do that?
We did.
That is the software.
That's the software.
You have one laptop that's at the front of the store?
It's, well, all the registers, there are five registers. Those five registers were all within like three steps to this laptop that sits there, that.
And is this the same software that, is this the same software that they have down at the San?
Sounds like it.
It is the same exact one?
Yes. And it gets updated, you know, regularly. They'll send us updates.
And it's the same one?
Yeah, it is the same one. See, it has it behind their register. It's on the shelf, right by the lottery machine.
One of the reasons we don't have it in every single register, well, several reasons, but one of the main reasons is that it costs a thousand dollars, okay? Number one. Number two, space constraints. I mean, those registers, you have just enough room for the register, scan the product, and bag the product. To go ahead and have another whole complete system there doesn't make any sense and couldn't work, where this can easily work and does work.
Well, if you use it, I guess. Okay. Well, I, you know, again, you know, we spoke just about a year ago about this. You know, it was flabbergasted at that point in time. We hit you with a severe penalty, hoping that everything would change, and it seems that it hasn't. And I don't know about the legalities of the fact that, you know, the person that went into the sting didn't follow the proper procedures, but regardless of the fact, the fact is, you served an underage person. You know, if you get off tonight, it's on a technicality that really you shouldn't, in my perspective. I think you should be penalized at a very high level, because at some point in time, you're getting your systems in place so that it doesn't happen anymore. I mean, this is just happening on the random times that we happen to a sting. We don't do a sting every weekend, and it's, you know, it makes us wonder, how often is it happening outside of these things? So, I don't know what you're going to do, and I really blame you. I don't blame her. You know, somehow you have got to put systems in place, just like the last time you went here, and you were blaming, you know, the cashier for doing it improperly. Somehow, you have got to manage these people so that it's part of the normal procedures of business, and no one can, you know, go outside of those lines of limit. Otherwise, you're not going to be able to sell liquor in this town. And we said it last year, and, you know, per our guidelines, you're supposed to lose your license after the fourth time. And that's not our intent. We don't want to put small businesses, I mean, in your store all the time, you know, out of business. But somehow, we've got to feel comfortable that you are going to make this happen. And I don't have any confidence that you are, you know, up to this point in time. So, I mean, I don't know where the board's going to go with this, but I, you know, I'm waiting for you to tell me. You know, you going and talking to everybody twice, you know, that's not the, I don't see that really impacting it. You know, what is going to change at the store so that the, so that this doesn't happen again? You know, and that's why I suggest one of these things at every register, if it costs you $4,000, it costs you $4,000, right? You're going to have a liquor license, you'll probably sell that, you know, I don't, whatever, however long it takes to sell $4,000 worth of liquor. But somehow, there's got to be a change in your operation so that this is more foolproof than it is now. You know, at some point in the conversation, we'll talk about what you guys want to do for a penalty, but I need to, I need us to go forward knowing, feeling confident that there's going to be some sort of change here, because it doesn't appear, well, there was a little bit. You bought the software and put it up front, but if they're not going to use it, it doesn't matter. So, yeah, I mean, those are my initial thoughts.
Karen?
Sure. I agree with Tony, I won't belabor it, but I will, I will say that this is different than the case we heard last week in that there have been repeated violations, and that you're telling us that you're using judgment calls on customers you know, which, you know, I get, but that the line should be so low that a 20-year-old could walk in and get it and wasn't a customer. I think you might want to evaluate, reevaluate that procedure, and, you know, I don't care if I come in, you know, because, of course, I look 35. If I came in every single week, I should be asked, even if I'm there every week, because clearly, there's things falling through the crack. That would be my feeling on that subject. I think that we will have to have a separate conversation of whether or not this particular incident can be acted upon, but I agree, it's, you know, it's a pattern.
All set?
All set.
I don't want to act like I'm easygoing or anything, but I was giving this some thought today, and before I came here, I was talking to my wife and my son. And what Mr. McGuinness said is absolutely the truth. I know a woman, I'm not going to mention her name, she's 60 years old, she doesn't go in there because it's kind of a hassle. She has to show her license. I respect what Mr. McGuinness said tonight. I clearly remember, and I think I know the individuals a couple of years ago, and I, you know, the way Mr. McGuinness handled himself at that hearing, I wasn't thrilled, kind of, you know. From what Tony said, you know, you're the one ultimately responsible back then. You kind of shifted the blame on the employee, but what you said tonight, you sound like myself. I hope her job's not in jeopardy. You know, she made a mistake. Price, getting to Tony's point, price of the, each computer is not that as important to me, but space is. You're a businessman, and, you know, if that's what you decide to, where to put that computer, that's your business. But if Karen's waiting in line, and she has a ton of stuff, she might get aggravated if that person has to go get the ID checked, and that might be, you know, you have to make that decision if she decides she's not going to go there, because it takes too long. But that's, it's all about volume, we don't have to tell you that. And I think you did get lucky. If things didn't go the way they went, you know, I might be, you know, asking to surrender the license, give it up for good. But, hey, so I said to my son tonight, I was 21, two weeks ago, I said, "A 21-year-old kid's going into the Village Marketplace to buy beer or wine?" He said, "Absolutely not." And he'd tell me, and I'd tell you, I'd say it tonight, and he said, "No." I don't think it's happening. I really don't. They made a mistake here tonight. But, no, you know, op department didn't, but it was someone from the A-B-C-C. So, I think you got lucky, and I'm sure you're going to learn from it. It's different tonight than it was a year or two ago. Mistakes happen. So, I, and I think if we did do something, it's only going to cost you, and some people might say, "So what?" He'll have to defend you and write letters to the A-B-C-C and so forth, and it might just get overturned, and it'd be wasting everyone's time. So, I think I've said everything, unless something else pops into my head, I'll chime in again.
John?
I was just going to ask, Attorney Canal, Canal, right? Do you have the regulations or the, that you'd suggested you had, the board?
Yes, I have the highlighted A-B-C-C compliance. I also have, to the degree you're interested, the case law.
I'd looked at a few of the cases. I didn't seem the right, we could just have that as a part of our record, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
If I may, a quick word on the legalities of it all.
John, do you want to ask a question first?
No, no, fine. I'm just curious.
Is that your only question?
Yeah, I just wanted to see the guidelines.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I live in, although I practice in Boston, I live in Cohasset. I shop at this market now and then when we're down in Situate. And I hope you don't take my argument as offensive as to the licensee, but it's strictly a legal argument. The licensee is very remorseful. And these stings, they're supposed to be educational, even when there is a predicate violation. A small violation, or a small suspension is generally the sanction for a sting as opposed to an actual sale to a minor. In this particular case, the law is pretty clear that when the agent for the government, or the police department in this case, violates one or more of the guidelines, you cannot find a predicate violation. That's my argument as a lawyer. That's not to diminish the remorsefulness of the licensee. So, I'd ask that, I think the licensee's obviously heard the board tonight, but I would ask the board not to find a violation. Otherwise, it generates all sorts of appeal rights and so forth.
Well, I think that's one of the issues that's up for consideration for us to sort of talk through a little bit, because Sergeant O'Brien did advise us, and it's in our information, that, according to the A-B-C-C, that at no time shall the underage person attempt to misrepresent their age or provide any identification. So, we understand that, and that's, you know, the quagmire that we're in, because we certainly want to ensure that Mr. McGuinness understands the severity of this. It's the fourth time. It's the second time since I've been here, and I've been here only for three years, so that's a lot. You know, that's a lot of violations in a year and a half, two in a year and a half. So, I think to Tony's point, something does have to change with regards to the way in which you train your employees and hold them accountable. I know you're trying, but obviously, there's some loopholes there that need to be tightened up. So, did you have any new information with regards to reading that, John?
No, not at this time.
It's pretty clear in this thing that if you don't follow all the guidelines, that it's invalid, the operation's invalid. So, and there's case law that says that as well. So, part of me says, "I don't care." You know, just, let's fine him, and if they want to fight it with the A-B-C-C, they can. I mean, we've got people in the back that got hit with a 10-day penalty just a couple weeks ago, and they had to deal with a fake license. You know, they, they got, kind of got duped in the process as well. I just, I just don't know what we're going to do here, you know? It's very upsetting, and I don't know how you're going to change it so it doesn't happen again. I'd really like to hear something from you that is going to say, "Okay, they got it," you know? You know, this is more a foolproof praying than it has, than it has been in the past.
Well, I, you know, I can't sit here and say I'm going to be Fenway Park, and that I will not sell alcohol to a 65-year-old woman or a 65-year-old guy that has white hair, that comes in and has their license with them, and doesn't even want to show it to me. Say, "No, I'm 65 years old." I mean, I hear people at Fenway Park argue with people at the bar and, to get a drink, and they forget it, okay? I'm a different kind of business. I'm a local business, okay? And I can't sit here and go ahead and say that I'm going to do that, because I can't. I mean, I'm in the business that take care of my customers, okay? And it has to be reasonable. And for me, or any business that sells beer and wine, okay, in a supermarket or in a convenience store, and whether they know the person or not, and say that they're going to go ahead and argue them, and I can't do that. I can sit here and lie. I can say, "Yeah, I'm going to do it," okay? But it's not reasonable. And that's the only other thing I think that I could do with everything that I've done so far in dealing with my key holders and my night managers, and consistently reiterating the importance of it and how it can't happen.
Well, I fear you're going to lose your license, then, because if you can't do anything other than that, and you did that a year ago and it didn't work, then you're going to lose your license. Fenway Park, I guarantee, doesn't have any of these situations going on, because they're strict. And you're refusing to be strict, or refusing?
I'm not refusing to be strict, however, respectfully.
Let me just finish, and I was, you're right there. I was probably, there's probably misspoke, but we're not, the 65-year-old guy isn't the one that's getting in these meetings. You know, it's the fact that it's the 20-year-old person that you're doing it to as well, and maybe it's the laissez-faire that you're saying, "I'm not going to card these people."
No, please.
I don't know. I'm just saying, you're here more than anybody else, and if it wasn't for this little technicality, you may be losing your license today. And that's not anything that any of us want to do. We all shop in your store. But you're here saying, "Well, I'm doing the best I can, and I'm not going to card everybody."
I'm not saying that, please. Don't put words in my mouth.
Well, tell me what you're going to do.
I just told you, okay? I'm going ahead, and I'm going to continue to reiterate, okay, with my key holders and managers, how important it is. We have systems in place. We got the software, okay? And if you sit up there and tell me, I'm not involved in the whole affair, is insulting.
Well, I don't mean to insult you, but I'm telling you what I'm hearing on this end. I'm telling you, every, anybody that goes to your store should be getting carded in any store they go to in this town. There shouldn't be any difference. Everybody's under the same rules. This sting is done on every, many oper, I don't know if you did everyone that night, but in the past, they've done every establishment in town. So, no one's any different.
We've had other stings also in my run, where people have come in and bought liquor, no liquor, beer or wine, and will ask them for their ID, and then walk straight out. And it's happened, so it's happened recently.
Well, that's good.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know. It's not like, you're making it sound like every time a sting is done, we're covered up against them.
No, I'm just saying, you, two times in the last year, four times in the last six years. So, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot for this town.
How many times before that? It was seven years.
I don't know, but this is too much.
It was seven years.
It's too much.
Yeah, I totally agree. One time is too much. I totally agree with you.
Agree on that. So, you know, you think that, I mean, again, I don't think we're going to be able to do anything on this one. I don't, I don't think that anyone really wants to pursue it here, but, you know, a year ago, this is what you said, "I'm going to talk to them, we're going to get the software, we're going to make them adhere to it, we're not going to have any other issues." And here we are.
If I, if I.
And I hope, let me just finish, you know? And I hope you do. I hope it turns, turns around. I really do. I like your store, I go to your store a lot, you know, I buy beer and wine in your store, and I don't want you to lose it. and I don't want you to lose it, but I fear that if it happens again, you're gonna come before us, and you're not gonna like the outcome. So I hope something changes and something is gonna somehow get put in place so that it can't happen again, is, is really what, what I'm trying to get to.
If I may, I routinely go to liquor stores and bars, and I'm never carded. Perhaps I look of age. There is, and I, because I'm in this field of the law, I do a lot of underage violations and so forth. The, the general consensus out there is that you don't card, except for the Boston Garden and Fenway Park, which cards everybody, no matter what you look like, most places use a degree of reasonableness, and that's a varying degree. I never get carded. I go to a liquor store down the end of the street, but I'm just saying that people do make mistakes, and it's happened here, and I think they've said that they're gonna double down and try and prevent that from happening in the future.
So, I just wanted to, I wanna say thank you for providing the compliance guidelines, you know, and the case that you referenced from the ABCC. I think it's fair to say that due to the fact that the police, in their attempt to undertake these compliance checks, unfortunately, the, the individual didn't comply with the guidelines. And a technicality, as it may be, it undermines the fairness and the uniformity that the guidelines are supposed to happen. That being said, I think, you know, to Tony's point, when I first came into this, I was thinking, you know, if there's a violation, certainly we could give you penalty, and then you take it from there to the ABCC. Knowing that from the case you gave, from citing other cases, understanding that the police acknowledged the fact that there was a violation and that the compliance for the guidelines were not met, I don't feel it's worthy to do that, knowing that it could and probably would be overturned, it's a waste of money. However, okay, I can tell you right now, and I've said this to the people who sit in the back, I'm not here to tell you how to run your business, that's gonna be up to you. I have to say that if there was a, if it was compliant, I have to tell you, I think it's, you're at that point where, within 10 years, there've been literally four violations. Now, the soon as the technicality gets off, because it's, that our end of the deal wasn't held up by the town, I, I'd go to Tony's point, everyone else's, it has to be controlled, you have to. It's a significant component of your business. The store used to, I think, prior to, I'm not sure, 2006 or 2005, the store didn't have alcohol, did not have beer and wine. It does now. And to put the store in that position, it's gonna be a very costly factor, a, a loss. So I, I have to tell you, I certainly was prepared to say you're gonna lose it for a long time. I don't think we can do it, because I think we'd be sending our, the town, at the cost, to go up on an appeal, to be overturned. But I have to say, if it comes before me while I'm on the board again and there is a violation, the penalty's gonna be extreme, really is. And, and you have to understand our position, and I'm sure you do, you're running a business, it's very important, it's a very important business. It's not just a liquor or package store, it's groceries and other items, and this component is of significant, it's not the only thing you do. But if you can't prevent it from underage selling, then, my feeling is then you can't have that privilege to sell it. And I said that to the other people, and I'll say it to anybody else, if you can't control it, the mechanisms, whether they're working or not, then that right has to be taken away, or that privilege has to be taken away. And you're at that point. I mean, you get angry and you get upset, but the reality is, you're at that point, and somebody else might want that ability to sell beer and wine, they should be given that opportunity, because if, it can't be controlled, that's, that's how I see it. Now, for all the times that you've passed other compliance checks, I understand that, but unfortunately, to Tony's point, the past 10 years, this is the fourth time you've come before us. It's, it's a problem. Just for 10 years, and it hadn't happened in 10 years, I'd be saying, "Okay, well, it failed," you know, go from there, but it's, it's happening too much. And I, I will say, the fact that the guidelines, that we are obligated as a town to adhere to them, it's a fairness issue, I respect that. So I, I have to say that, yeah, I don't think we can enforce anything at this time. But let me tell you, I will, I'm just, just telling you right up front, because I, I just see this as a constant problem, and, and that's why I say to you, it's your business, you have to determine how you're gonna deal with it. And, and that's how I see it. And yes, I go to your store a lot, I do. And, you know, whether it's buying food items, or, or, you know, wine or beer, I've done that. And I understand how the mechanisms work, I actually pull my card out. Yeah, you, I think you still have ID, or used to, and I haven't looked, but whenever I do, it says, "We vote or we ID all licenses," so. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
No, it was answered already, thank you.
You good?
Yes, I am. It was just, it had to do with, if they pass, just give us a quick note, if they decide you do a sting and everyone passes, just let us know.
You've done that before.
That's me now, when I said you were new.
Yeah, you've done that before. Karen, any additional comments?
No, I think, I think we've covered it.
I just have one more, and, and I agree with what John said, and I think if we were to try and make a point here and hit you with a violation, it's just gonna cost you money, and it's gonna cost the town money, and you're gonna win by the paperwork that we have here. But I do think it should be noted in his record that there was a violation that happened on this date.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And that, if it happens again, and a future board has to deal with it, they'll see that there were violations four times, not just three times.
If I may, I don't think you can find a violation. I think that's what the case law says, is you cannot find a violation.
Well, this says the ABCC can't, they're a different entity than us. I think, I think we can have it in our record that there was a violation.
Certainly, you're gonna have that there was a hearing for it, and then what was the penalty, like, the, I guess there was one in 2006, and it was just, you know, nothing came of it.
If I, if I may, when you enter via, is Situate a town of progressive discipline?
Yes.
All right, so when you have a violation, then it counts towards that, and that would be the problem. I think an appeal, if there was one, would reverse the violation. There are two things to every appeal, there's whether there was a predicate violation, and then there's the sanction. So I do believe that, the case law is pretty clear, that you cannot find a violation, as much as it may disgust the board, that you can't, even though there was a sale, it was done after the agent of the government induced the sale.
We'll ask our attorney to, but, but it should at least be noted in their record, next time it comes before a violation, that there was an, there was a hearing this day and what the outcome was.
I agree with that, I don't know that we need to have a motion to keep that on record. May it be a part of the record in the minutes and-
What the ABCC does a lot of the times, they say, "But for the procedural irregularities, we may have reached a different decision," but it isn't a violation, is what, the way they, they do it.
We'll figure out.
All right.
Thank you.
If I could just say one more thing?
Sure.
If it makes the board feel a little bit better, I am paying an attorney fee, I'm not paying a fine, but I'm paying a hefty fee, so I'm, I'm being, I am being punished, even though along with being upfront here, in monetary, a fine.
I would say to Mr. McGinnis that sometimes paying an attorney is a valuable thing to do.
Senator, I'm gonna second that motion.
Well, that may sound selfish and self-serving, it's sometimes, regardless, it's, it's very valuable. Because if some of this hadn't been, shall we say, put forward, you know, it saves you a lot more money than bigger picture, too.
What I would just say lastly to Mr. McGinnis is, while we're not allowed to, well, it doesn't seem like we're allowed to apply any type of violation, I'd like to see some sort of written response from you and your establishment, telling us the board what your next steps are going to be, so we have that documentation as well. I don't know if that's within our purview, but certainly, you know, to Tony's point, I think, you know, I brought it up as well, is that, you know, having you in here twice in the last year and a half, you got the software, but what is the next level? You know, you say double down, what does that mean? You know, I'd love to know a little bit more specifics about that and have that documented as well.
Good.
All right, I don't think there's cause for a motion?
Well, do you want to do a motion and include "but" for the procedural irregularity?
So, move that the board of selectmen, I'm just saying this, I'm not moving it.
I'm gonna make a motion, the board of selectmen find that there was not a, it says liquor violation, but I think it's just, I guess, I'm not sure if that's technically the right way, but, I'll call it liquor violation.
There was one, right?
That there was not a liquor violation on Wednesday, October 25th, 2017, for MFJ Market Inc. doing business as the village market as a result of a failure of compliance, as a result of failing to comply with the compliance guidelines set forth by the ABCC.
Second.
If you want to discuss it, I'll-
Yeah, further discussion?
So I'm just saying that there wasn't a violation because of the, the compliance guidelines from the ABC, was not complied with. I'm not trying to put it on the police by any means, I'm just saying that it was a result of the failure to comply, and so therefore there is not a violation. The compliance guidelines were not-
Right, no, I know what you're saying.
So there's no violation. Because technically, there is no-
I'd rather actually have the, the motion in the other way, that there was a violation, but that we're unable to, but-
But it's not penalized.
Yeah, it's not, we're unable to-
Can you do that?
Penalize it.
Or is-
I, I think, I think to the point of, if you say there's a violation, then I think, to Attorney Canal's point, then you're, you're finding something a violation, which means that now it's a fourth violation. I, I don't think you can do that. If there's a, if the guidelines are in, are not adhered to, then there is no violation. And he's right, from my view, reading of it. So that's why I'm saying the motion I'm making is saying that there was no violation as a result of the failure to comply with the compliance.
We could also choose not to make a motion and just let the minutes reflect this conversation.
To the minutes of our whole discussion. Lorraine, do we have to have a motion of any type?
We do not. But if you wanted to summarize it, I did write something, so.
I think you can place it on file as another remedy pursuant to Roberts rules.
Well, I don't have a problem with the way the motion is, at least it's in the record and that they were here, the minutes are here, but if the board wants it-
I mean, if there's another violation, you're at, you're not at-
You're at five.
You're not at five, you're at four.
Right.
She can't do that, is what it is.
I, I understand.
That's all I'm saying.
We have a motion and a second.
It's up to you, I'll, if you want to withdraw, withdraw, but I just put it that way so that at least you know.
I'm okay with it.
The reason why I didn't carry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Five, zero. I really would love to see some kind of documentation from you, Mr. McGinnis.
Would you like that sent by a date certain, or?
I'll do this one.
Something they want to bottom?
End of the year?
Month?
December, yeah, that's fine, December 30th.
Point you down.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant O'Brien.
What if we should take a couple of these out of the walls? Because I think this will go longer.
Probably, yeah, yeah, no, that's a good point. So, does the board, does the board have, I am, I am, so does the board have any objection to me just taking out of order for a minute? Take Kathy, I think she's quick, Kevin? Kathy Curran? Does the board, is the board fine, taking it out of order?
Unless Kathy wants to wait until the end.
I would love to wait, if my allergies would allow me to stay awake that long. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, by the way. So, hi, so you have a contract that usually is signed by the purveyor? No, what am I trying to say? I don't even know. So anyhow, you have a contract in front of you for an archives project that was funded by a CPC vote at the town meeting, it was for FY17. It is from, excuse me, Northeast Documents Conservation Center for the cleaning and preservation of the paupers and the records of the poor. And because it's over a certain amount, it has to be signed off on, basically.
Okay.
All right, the other quote that we got was not, it was not acceptable because it wasn't with the scope of work that we requested, which included the cleaning of the documents, because they have really some bad stuff on them. And they only do deacidific, how do you say it, deacidification? I can't even say it, and preservation, they don't do the cleaning of the documents.
What are the years on these?
Oh, gosh, they go back to the 1800s. 1800s, 1700s, I think, I wish I had them in front of me.
So what, these are like-
These are really, these are really, actually, I was, you may see, somebody pointed out to me that if their families are, did any ancestry, I mean, how, it would be really depressing, if that's how bad these records are, as far as the history of these, these poor people. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting, I wish Betty was here to explain it more in depth, but these are important documents as far as ancestry goes and history of what happened to the poor and the paupers back in the day. So the documents are in tough shape, New England documents, Northeast documents send a rather, this is what they do, they clean the documents, these have fly-
Sure.
Oh, yeah, it's bad stuff.
So it's just cleaning and deacidification?
I know, right, thank you, I can't say it either.
No digitalization of the records.
Oh, that was, yeah, that went way over than what we had estimated.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully in the future.
So this is $35,000?
Yes.
How much was the article for?
Forty-two and change, and we have, the selectmen's minutes are being bound by another company, so that eats up the rest of the money. But the, the scanning and the digit, is it either digitizing or microfilming was, I think, another $30,000 for the pauper, just for the paupers' records. So we're gonna have the selectmen's minutes scanned to CDs with the leftover money, that's all we have money for, and put in new, and put in bound, bound books. And hopefully in the future, we can take the CDs of the selectmen's minutes, and then maybe eventually the paupers, and have those scanned. Either, well, again, microfilm, I don't understand it, but that's the preferred method.
How far back do the selectmen's minutes go?
These are 2002 to 2000, yeah, all the other ones have been done. 2012, I think, 10 years worth, so.
Any other questions for Kathy?
Were there any other bits, Kathy, I just go back?
There was a quote, but like I said, they only de, did the deacidification, they did not clean what was on them off, so, and they came in much lower, but that doesn't do anything for the records, to preserve them.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to vote to approve the contract with Northeast Document Conservation Center for the Cleaning, Deacidification, and Preservation of the Paupers Overseers of the Poor records in the amount of $35,170.
Second.
Move by Mr. Danahi, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, have it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will, I will pass that on to Betty, she'll be thrilled.
Thank you so much.
Happy Thanksgiving again, everybody.
You too, Kathy, happy Thanksgiving. I'm just gonna take one quick one out of order, because I think it'll be, and we'll go back to sewer, we'll just do the naming of North Situate Playground, I know that'll be quick, and then we'll go back. Maura, did you want to come up?
Sure.
Okay. And then we'll go back, did you get it?
I told, boy, that it would be quick. Oh, I don't know, looks quick. So, hi. So, good evening.
Good evening.
So I know you were here a couple weeks back, and Mr. Danahi had asked to take a look at Susan Fitton and her estate, and whether or not she was interested, well, the estate was interested in naming the playground after her. I did call Kim Stewart, who is one of the executors of Susan's estate, and talked to her about it, and she had indicated that no. They were very grateful for that suggestion, and for that thought, but that they have other plans for naming for Susan Fitton. So I wanted to share that with you, with regards to that communication from Kim. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, and what you're recommending with regards to that information, I know you and I had spoken, so I shared Kim's response to me to you.
Yes, you did. Well, thank you very much. The reason why we're looking to name is because we're gonna put a sign up, and so we have to put something on the sign, as far as the name. We tossed around having a called Seaside Fun, again, because it was replacing the one up here at the high school, that now that the parking lot, well-needed parking lot is. And I think they, you people came to a conclusion that North Situate Playground might be the best bet, that it would solve a lot of problems of directions. Not many people would say, where's North Situate Playground, because it would be in North Situate. And it wouldn't have any ownership to somebody's name at this time. You might be able to do it in time, maybe naming after somebody, but there isn't anybody that really sticks out right now, I guess, to you people. But that's officially what they, I think that's what they want. I'm gonna hand this over to Janine, she's our fundraising committee chairman, so...
Good evening.
Just name an address for the record.
Janine Chisholm, 5 Cedric Drive, Situate.
Thank you.
We did, we took a vote of the fundraising committee, and unanimously decided that the North Situate Playground is a good fit. It's sort of organic, it's what people are calling it. Anyhow, when they refer to it, it's easy, and it's also nice, I think, for the area of town that it's in. North Situate, I think, deserves something like this.
Motorized.
Yeah, so it just, it fits, and we all agreed, and hope you do too.
Okay. Any questions for Tony? Johnson, no.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think we're, and I don't think we necessarily have to do it today, but I think that there's a great naming opportunity for this playground. I don't even know if we need to name it, the North Situate, you know, is that a formal name, or is it just, can that just be put on a sign, because, I mean, it's so obvious that it's, you know, is it really name the North Situate Playground, or is it just the North Situate Playground? So I would like to consider, I didn't know about the Susan Pippin thing, that her estate didn't want it, and if not, I think we should think about if there's someone else who we should name something about, and again, doesn't have to be this year, like Maura said, it could be in the future, but I really think we should consider it, because it's a great thing, a ton of public money went towards it, and I'm sure we can find someone or some event that was worthy of naming it, so. I mean, I have no problem, in the time being, putting a sign that says the North Situate Playground, but I would like to just think about it, and see if there's another naming opportunity that we have for someone else that we've thought about over the years.
That's a good point. Sean?
How would the people feel, it might have donated money to it, if it was gonna be named after somebody? I just, I wouldn't rush to naming it, naming it after anybody, just leave it like that, North Situate Playground.
Did you include any of that in your fundraising, any naming rights? Some fundraising groups do that, they will put like a threshold to give folks naming rights, but I don't think, because it's all CPC, right? You wrote that too. Okay. That was my understanding.
How much was the fundraising?
Twenty-two thousand, something? Yeah, okay, so not like a huge...
There were numerous memorials within that fundraising. One was Deborah Hoffman, the other one was Richard Kent. They were big contributors, as far as in memory of...
Are there bricks or something going in, or no?
No, that was the seaside. They had bricks, that was that fundraising campaign back, gosh, twenty-some odd years ago, Karen?
There are plaques and benches and a table.
That have their names on there.
And some equipment.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the Course Foundation has a couple things in there.
So there are, there is naming of stuff at the, at the event for donating, for people that donate.
Okay.
It might leave you a nice opportunity, when they put it on the sign, you can probably, it would be called the North Situate Playground, but then if you rename it, you could probably just add it on top, and it'll give you time to think. I just think it's for the GPS and that, that kind of thing for the people.
I just would like to add that I personally am a bit anxious to get a sign up of rules, considering some young children were skateboarding on our port-in-place, and I just, there are certain things that you would think, there's no sign saying that you can, and it looks like a great surface to ride around on, and it's just not safe, and for many reasons, so I think we're anxious to get a nice sign up with the rules and regulations, as well as something pretty.
I wouldn't want to hold that up.
Yeah.
Like Maura said, it can be, you know, it could be, you know, Danheat Park, or the north, you know, something like that, in some time in the future. I will just tell you that there were signs up that said, don't skateboard on the basketball ports over there, and they didn't really last too long, so, but I hope they do, you know, I hope that'll deter some...
Karen, did you have anything? Yeah, I think it's a great, great idea. Alright, well, why don't we name it, just so they can move forward and create their sign, and I think your suggestion to think of something in the future, endures as well more, is a good idea. Does that sound good? Alright, do I have a motion?
Is there one, a form?
There is, yes, there's one there, just to move to name it.
Lot of ground located at Heavy Tread Bailey Road, the North Situate Playground.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Danahy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, and good luck with that sign.
Thank you.
Alright, Kevin, sorry, thank you. Kevin Cafferty, we'll discuss sewer capacity, and Will. Thanks for coming forward, Kevin, and Will.
Thank you for having us.
How are you this evening?
Very well.
So, we had asked Al and Kevin to go through and put together a summary, we've got a lot of development going on in town, a lot of requests from different folks wanting to connect into sewer, and I think all of us, you know, the Board really wants to get an updated state of the state, if you will, for our sewer capacity, and how we're calculating our capacity, and where we're at with I and I, so Kevin, I know you've given us a document here, if you wouldn't mind reviewing, and then...
Nope, gladly, I'll go through it. Before we get started, I just want to thank people for conserving water this past week, we were doing some work to the water treatment plant, and also reach out to the crew at the Water Department. They were working tireless hours, and they worked this weekend to make sure everything's in place and in good shape, so we finally get that taken care of, and we're feeling good about it, so, thank you. To get into the sewer study, where we are with sewer, I put just a memo together, I'll read through it, and hit some of the higher points for everybody. Statistically, we have about 2,875 sewer connections, 32 miles of pipe, 480 manholes, nine pump stations, and one water treatment plant. The plant is permitted for 1.6 million gallons a day, with a max peak flow of 4.36 million gallons. That's in a storm event. We've made some recent repairs to the whole system, we've done some skater updates, it's a three-phase program, but we've made a lot of headway in that. We've completed replacements of the bearings and motor assemblies on two of the three clarifiers. We took Chain Pond Pump Station and replaced all the internals, and did a complete replacement of majority of that. Sand Hills Pump Station, it was originally designed to have three pumps, so that in, you'd always have one pump that you could take offline, it only had two, we added the third pump, plus replaced the two pumps that we had. We also cleaned out, why, we had a bypass in that system, we were able to clean out the grit chambers in that pump station, which is an interesting job, to say the least. As I said, the town's permitted capacity is 1.6 million gallons. The way our plan is put together, we have 20% in reserve for our future phases, which are Phase Four, Five, and Six. Phase Four is around Front Street and some of the other areas in there, Phase Five is North Situate, and Phase Six is the Minutet area.
Kevin, I'm sorry, say that again, it was, Phase Four is the trees?
Phase Four is the tree streets in that area, Phase Five is North Situate, Phase Six is the Minutet area down off Glades Road, and that whole area and that.
So if you can just clarify this, so does this mean that we have the capacity for those three areas in reserve right now?
I'm getting, I just, prefrontal, I'll get to it in a second.
Okay.
So, that's the 1.28, and that's to keep reserve for some of those areas. So our current yearly flow, right now, is 1.329, that's our rolling average. So in order to keep that 20% buffer, we should be around the 1.28. 2014, we were 1.305, 2015, we were 1.256, in 2016, we were 1.22. In the document that I...
So just to stop you?
Yep.
Just to level set, so if our average rolling rate is 1.32, we would add 1.42 to get to total capacity, correct? The 0.42 from what you're calculating as reserve?
1.6, 1.6 is our total capacity, and if we went over that, we'd be issued fines, we'd be late fines.
Right. Okay.
Did that answer the question, or did I?
Yes. Well, I would add the 0.42 to that.
Then we're over.
And then we're over.
You're over.
Right.
You're over to that.
Exactly.
And that 0.42 takes into consideration, some of the homes already in the street area have been connected up to sewer through different means, and other areas through...
Spaghetti lines.
Spaghetti lines, exactly.
Is that a 12-month rolling? Or is that...
That's a 12-month rolling average. So, two pages, three pages forward, actually, is our rolling average. Our rolling average was significantly affected last year by March, February, March, and April. February, we were averaging 1.7, March, we were 1.42, and last April, we had 2.271, and that was from, we had storms, we had a lot of storm area in that. It can show you how directly the storms can affect our, our inflow in the sewer system. So if you took out and did an average April, we would still probably fall right around the 1.28 area. In math, I just pulled that out and did a previous year of that. So we're high on our rolling average. So what have we been doing to try to alleviate some of this, and some of the I and I removal? One of the things we're planning, or we're hoping, that's gonna be a big help with the I and I issue, is the new seawalls down on Oceanside Drive. One of the things that happened is when we get hit with the storms, and I've got a picture included in, in the package that I gave you, I don't have it for everybody, those streets flood. Where that water goes, is it doesn't necessarily go to the drains, a lot of that seawater goes directly into the sewer system, through manholes, through absorption, through the road, through everything, it gets in there one way or the other. And we've noticed huge spikes at the treatment plant when this occurs. We've taken up to, we've taken five or six million gallons a day, at times, just that amount of water, and sometimes we have to go into bypass when that occurs. That's direct, it can be affected. One of the things that we're hoping with the new seawalls, that are two feet higher, that we will have less flooding in the area, which will cause less inflow and infiltration during the storms.
Let me ask you this, Kevin, we were considering two years ago, I think, of creating a pump station out there, that would take and pump it back out, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Wouldn't that be another option to try to put out there?
That's always another option, we've looked into that, and we applied for grant funding, which Nancy Durfee could address, she's up after me, and we did not receive the grant funding for that. But it's something we could pursue in capital, and look to put a pump station in there to help alleviate some of that.
Right, okay.
Didn't we make repairs and put gates in and stuff like that, so it'll naturally go out? Flow checks, didn't we? The bottom of 8th Avenue or 10th?
What we, what we put in is, we replaced the tide gate that used to be there, that would get jammed up with stuff, and we put in, we kind of call it like an elephant snout, it's a big rubber piece that collapses on itself and doesn't allow the water, it only allows the water to flow in one direction. Similar to a tide gate, but it's a little...
Because I know we did it right by Joe Malone's house on Jericho Road, to...
That was a different setup.
I know it was.
The problem that we are having is the drain out front is, is lower, you'd have to replace all the drainage, so when we get a high tide surge, it's above the discharge tunnel, so the water's never, never gonna go out. And the way we figured we'd handle it is, we'd try to stop the water from coming over. You know, it's one of the good aspects of rebuilding the seawall, is hopefully that we have less water that is coming over. The other thing that we're working on is, right now, we're in the process of engineering the Cedar Point Replacement Project, and that would be a switch from, we have an older sewer that's about 17 feet deep out there, obviously on a peninsula, and it's a clay pipe, it's been lined a couple times, we've had some problems with the liners here and there, but we'd switch it over to a pressurized sewer system. We did a sewer study of our system a while back, and...
How long ago, Kevin?
2016, 2013, yeah, 316, we were out there with flow meters. And we broke down the sewer districts into 12 subareas, and we actually put meters in each sewer manhole, and timed what the flows were, and when we were getting flows. And then we correlated that to storm events, water events, and high tide events, and that's how we got some of the data of what the inflow that we're getting now, and we targeted the Cedar Point area as a replacement area with a pressurized system.
Can I just interject there? I realize that if we're gonna, which we are, planning to replace the system in Cedar Point, going all the way around, that is only for that portion that's in the street itself. Do we know from visualizing it with maybe cameras, you know, I assume, because once you replace that, that's gonna tighten it up a little bit, but all the laterals that go to the other houses?
We're gonna do the laterals also, because of what happens with a pressurized system, is you actually have a pump in the house or in the driveway, and the pump pumps the water out, it grinds it up, pumps it out through the force main.
So it'll be connected to the house?
And it'll be connected to the house, and that'll, that'll take care of, what we're getting killed with is the, not just the main line, we're also getting killed with all the services. As, as people have said before, when they talk about, it's death by a thousand paper cuts. So we keep lining it, lining it, cleaning it, lining it, and we're not getting anywhere, so I figured we might as well just step back and pump, and put a whole new pressurized system in, similar to what we did on Surfside Road, we put a pressurized system in so that we'd avoid that, when there was flooding or any issues over there. And it's been successful so far, we did Miskoaski. So that's, that's the approach we're going for.
What's the date on that, Kevin? Is that next spring?
We're hoping for next spring. We are in the permitting phase now, hopefully, we get through the permits pretty quick and easily, and we're working on the design, and it was gonna be a winter project, start in the spring.
Kevin, when do we do the water out on Lighthouse Point?
Two years ago, I believe.
Who was the engineer for that? Was it Weston Sampson?
It was Weston Sampson.
Did you say there's gonna be a pump in everyone's house?
Yes.
Does it have to be that way?
We might be able to do one pump for two houses.
But electricity goes out, your pump doesn't work. You have tanks to hold a certain amount, but it only holds X amount, right? It's a tight...
Correct.
It's a tight...
Correct.
Would you want to buy a house with a gravity system, or, you know, a pump system?
So there's gonna be a tight tank in everybody's house?
Well, I should have said that, but it's a tag that's...
No, it's a pump, it's a pump system that's at the house, it could either be in the basement or it could be outside.
And that's part of this whole project?
It's part of the project. So, you know, actually, Karen, Karen bought a house with one in it, and have you had any issues with it, or any, I mean, knock on wood, so far, I'm just...
Yeah, we lost power for six hours last storm.
There's a certain capacity in there, once, once you have it, I mean, you don't go and, you know, run the shower and leave everything going for a long time, but there is, there's always that problem, if you do lose electricity.
I just, if there's a way around it, let's look at it. That's all.
That was gonna be my question, were there any other solutions evaluated?
I mean, there was a lot of things, there were quite a few things that were looked at, and that was kind of the optimum plan of what we came up with. And we actually awarded that contract a while ago, we discussed it with the Board for the engineering-wise, so we would be putting a pressurized sewer system in, so it's already intact. We looked at replacing the system, it'd be extremely expensive, going down 17 feet in that area, and keeping it gravity. We looked at lining, we haven't had very much success on doing the lining, so we figured So we figured the way that we could eliminate the most, the mostness was suggested by the engineering firm that did the, that did the study for, for the flows.
Kevin, if it's one thing we hear, we hear it not, not daily, but weekly. Street just got ripped up, just got paved, two years ago. Why didn't we think of this then? We knew it was happening. We should have done it then. So it's just, you know, I know it's a small price to pay to have sewer, you have it done right. But it gets old driving over some of these streets. That's all. So we've got to keep that in mind going forward.
Yep. And I agree totally, Sean. We take a look at it. And the water lines had already been in. It was part of the process to replace that before the study was done.
Sampson's not new to the game, to this town. They know where, you know, 20 years ago, I was told, we're going to do Front Street because that's where all, that's where all the water's coming. Jericho Road, that's where it's all coming. So we bought into that. We're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. We're going to fix the worst ones. And here we are still treating a lot of seawater or freshwater, whatever it is. Someone maybe misled us a little bit, I don't know. But we have to do it. We, you know, something DEP, I realize, is making us correct the INI.
So to move forward with that, in replacing the line at Cedar Point and changing that around, it's estimated it would remove .04 million gallons per day out of the system, which is 40,000 gallons per day. That could be higher in storms, storm surcharges, as that area gets hit pretty hard. But basically, we're expecting to remove, we're hoping to remove 40,000 gallons per day by doing that area.
Forty thousand or four?
.04 million gallons per day, which equals 40,000 gallons.
So that still isn't one of these districts? The districts are .14.
Correct.
Right.
So one of the other exciting things that we've been doing is we've been working with the Town of Hull and the Town of Cohasset and looking into a regionalized sewer program. Town of Hull is making upgrades to their treatment plant, which has a direct outfall to the ocean and could potentially take significant amounts of additional flows, which could handle North Situate and possibly minor areas in the future.
So Kevin, can I jump in there?
Yes.
So if that's successful, and we, you know, I have a couple of pages of the meeting we went to. So could we take five and six off this list? Or are we, are we talking about just the business district in North Situate Village? Or we, you know, is it safe to say?
Well, I, in that meeting, Sean, I put in for, I put in for, I think, .3 million gallons to even .5 million gallons, because I was also thinking that we'd have significant growth over this area. So I said, capacity wise, we would be interested for up to .5.
.5 gal, million gallons?
Million gallons per day.
The problem with that, Sean, is it's not going to happen for three to five years.
Well, I don't know. I don't know about that. That's what, you know, we'll, we've gone to both those meetings and I'm going to let Kevin talk to it, but, you know, we are moving along. So I think we could, is it?
How far out do you think it is?
Well, first, the next step, I'm going to jump over here. The next step is a viability study, which is expected, probably within 90 days, we'll have some results of the viability study. And what they're going to do is take a look at it. They're comparing all the towns' GIS systems, looking at the parcel data, and seeing what they can do to develop wastewater alternatives and preliminary cost benefit issues. So they'd find out what the costs are associated with it and where we'd be with that. Then we'll have a regional group meeting to discuss the progress is set for January 10th. And we'll get some feedback at that point from where those plans are going. Hull and Cohasset are very, very interested in it. And the other thing that we looked at is, like we've talked about before with this board, is for them to look at parcels where we could potentially put a direct discharge into the ground for, say, a million gallons per day system, either in Cohasset or Situate or somewhere in the area, to handle both those areas as opposed to going to the wastewater treatment plant. Just looking at all alternatives and seeing what our best options are.
Is that going to be part of that 90-day study?
We, I asked them to do that as part of the...
Ninety days, just a flow study? What is...
I asked them to do that as part of the study and just identify parcels and see what viability that would be.
In layman's terms, are you saying a million gallon tank?
Nope.
That would store?
It would be, just like in some of these big subdivisions, or they have these giant, larger combined systems. And it would be a direct discharge into the ground.
Just a septic system?
So like a septic system?
A giant septic system, yeah.
Say a giant cesspool.
And it's run, when you say that, it's not a cesspool because everything's treated. In some of the newer technology, it can be done pretty successfully. So that's, that's one of the things that we are looking at also.
In Cohasset, on their land.
But to be, it would be a permitted facility guaranteeing a certain level of treatment in order to prevent any sort of harm to the area. This would be very clean water, equivalent to what the treatment plant is already providing for the Town of Situate.
Say that again, somewhere to what?
It would be a permitted facility, which would require stringent limits and monitoring of what's going into the ground, guaranteeing that what's being discharged is a, is a clean effluent and won't damage anything. So our guidelines, we wouldn't fall just under the Board of Health. We would fall under DEP guidelines and rules, just, just like we do with our wastewater treatment. And it'd be, it'd be permitting and everything else. But it is, it's another option to look at. And it's something we've asked them to check out. And yes, Cohasset would be the perfect place to send everything.
No, no, we've talked about it, having another one in our town too. I don't know what we, we have the land to do.
And that's what we went, and that's one of the things that, and it's one of the things that the engineering firm is having a problem with because we've got different degrees of GIS and they're trying to mix and match everything. And it's not, you know, it's not the same, same programs necessarily. And they're trying to, trying to figure it out. Woodward and Karen, the engineering firm that Hull uses, is trying to figure that out and come up with a, a good plan that we can go with.
So what's your expectation on January 10th?
We'll get an update where they are with the engineering and where they are with the scopes. It's probably going to be more technical, where they're saying, you know, we might be able to match up what Situate has for GIS, because we're limited on what we have for GIS compared to Cohasset's or Hull's or, or figuring out the best ways to come through and run these flows. The other thing that we're also looking into is grants. We're going after some regional group grants and some E and R, E and R grants that we could compete pretty well being, being a regional type group that we're putting together and seeing what we could come up with for that. And then they're also getting into, we could consider revolving funds in the different grant opportunities that we have. And that's spelled out in the last page of this, considerations for future work.
So the total, like 2% I had written down?
So low interest on the SRF is typically 2%. But the big hope is if you could get an E and R grant for $200,000, which would take care of the next phase of engineering and getting into more depth if it, if it looks like it's a viable solution.
All right. And so you're anticipating annual town meeting, being ready to ask for money, special town. I know you have both here. You know, what's your...
We've got both, both listed. My gut feeling is more towards the fall, but I mean, we will see how things go. We haven't got any deliverables yet. So as soon as we get deliverables, I'll have a better idea of where we are.
Kevin, is it just safe to say that Town of Hull is, as excited as we are to get this up and running? Lot of revenue for them, you know?
The Town of Hull has to make upgrades to their plant. They're required to. They're being pushed into it. So if they could defray some of the costs, they would be very much interested in this. So it's kind of, I'm going to use that term wheeling again, where we would wheel our sewage to Cohasset. Cohasset would wheel their sewage to Hull and handle that. We're not going to ship ours all the way to Hull. But, but it's just wheeled in. We use Cohasset's capacity. Cohasset relays their capacity over to Hull. And it's kind of, if it works out, it's a win-win for everybody. You know, we're, we're hopeful on it. Sean's been coming to the meetings and so far, we're all speaking the right language. So we just hope the numbers work out money-wise.
Okay.
There was, Hingham was involved. I think I told you guys earlier, but they're no longer interested, so.
So is the cost per gallon of waste or whatever we do, is it going to be similar, do you think? Or you don't have any idea yet?
We don't have any idea yet because it depends. The infrastructure has to be looked at, how many pump stations you'd need to divert this, how many sewer lines. And there's quite a few things that they're looking at. So, as I said, it's preliminary.
Can we, are you...
No, go ahead.
So I just want to get a sense of what our sewer capacity is right now. Because I think we were all a little bit surprised when we found out that we may not have any capacity right now. When we gave Toll Brothers their septic system, we thought we had the capacity to do North Situate as well. So I'm a little confused as to where, where we are right now in terms of our sewer capacity.
Okay.
And I know that it peaks in this time of year, every year.
So, so right now, our rolling average is at 1.329. We can go up to 1.6.
There doesn't have to be any buffer. We can go right up to 1.6.
You can go right up to 1.6. If you go to 1.6001, we're subject to fines and we're in violation of our permit for our rolling average.
Okay. So we do have the capacity to do one other?
We have the capacity. And the way it was spelled out back when they originally did that sewer plan is that at the 80%, we would start evaluating these three other areas and try to reserve that for the three other areas.
What do you mean at the 80%? 80% of our capacity?
80% of our capacity, which is the 1.28, which is in our NEPT's permit. So that's, that's where that 1.28 number comes from.
Okay. So when we hit 80%, we then have to do what?
We evaluate where we are and we take a hard look at it. That was reserved for those other three areas, per se. But that being said, the sewer commissioners have the right to change that.
Well, I guess what we want to know is what can we do and what can't we do? So it looks like right now, if we are really at this 1.329, then we only have 2.61, 71, before we hit that 1.6 number.
Correct.
And each one of those new things is about 1.5, 150,000 gallons.
For the areas, correct.
So we have the capacity maybe to do one more area. Unless some of these other things that we're doing bring our rolling average down.
Brings our rolling average down in, you know, one of the other points I had in here is our INI rate, you know, inflow and infiltration rate is about .45, 450,000 gallons of what we're receiving that's not sewage based from salt water and groundwater and everything else from the system.
Is that .5 a part of the 1.3 that we're experiencing as an average rate?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think if I recall...
It's not going to clean up that much.
I think if I recall, the Toll Brothers project was about .02 for the value of how much that brought in.
20,000 gallons a day?
It says 20,000 gallons, yeah.
It was 20,000, 22,487 gallons a day was projected sewage.
So the projects that you have listed here, Kevin, kind of, so let's go, if the board doesn't mind, I just want to understand, you know, when these projects are taken into consideration, these projects are already approved, right?
Nope. These are potential future projects that are, that are coming in.
So these, okay.
So what I did is I asked Brad to see what's, what's in route, what's been approached and what are potential sewer projects coming in the future. So we've included, I've got a list of those on the third page, which includes Lawson Estate, Central Park Drive, Stockbridge Road, Hadley Road, the Toll Brothers project, because that's a future project, 50 Country Way, the potential MBTA project at the Green Bush parking station or parking lot, and a small one on Union, Union Street.
So these, those projects you just mentioned there are not in four, five, or six?
Correct.
And they're not in that capacity either, right?
No. You haven't figured?
So we've got, we'd have to take .05.
Correct.
Which still gives us the ability to do one of those projects.
When we were talking about this agenda item tonight, there was someone that was going to be here. And we decided it was not the right time to talk about it. But I just want to talk about the idea of it. And, you know, we all deal with this all the time. Here we are, these projects, you know, great projects and all. Sometimes we can, most of the time, we can't say no to them. So we let them tie into the, you know, allow them to tie in. And you've heard me say this a few times, what about those little pockets that haven't been tied in? Those homes that have been here for 50 and 60 years? So the, I don't really know what the answer is. And I'm looking to Kevin, you know, is this what we want to do? Let other new developments come in and tie in and then we're up to our capacity in the Roses Lane of the town? It's, you know, the unfortunate, not the Roses Lane, they were lucky to get tied in, but the other roads, developments like that are knocked out.
So I think that's why we have Kevin here, is just so we can figure out, sounds like to me, like, you know, what are the steps to add capacity or we have to change our direction and require some pretty extensive septic solutions?
Exactly.
We continue with the regionalization as...
We continue working on the regionalization, definitely.
It's a great opportunity.
Because if, if it works out, it'd be, it'd be a win-win, I think, for everybody.
But is that like 2019, 2020? You know, what are we talking about? Because you've got folks knocking on our door now, right?
It's got to be like 2005.
I don't know.
Yeah. So it's a long way out.
Can we ask that question on January 10th?
We can ask that question on January 10th. I was, I thought they were under a mandate to update the plant sooner.
Okay. And that would be great to know that day.
But I could be wrong. We'll find out when the plant has to be updated by. And that's what they're trying to judge it by. Do they update the plant to 2 million gallons per day? Or do they go for a bump in their permit and do 3 million gallons a day to handle Situate and Cohasset additional flows?
Good.
I think Sean brings up a good point. We've got to, we really have to pay attention to this. I mean, I think we've got to look at the order of things that we're going to do. We've been talking about doing North Situate for at least five years now, you know, and now you have a fire up there that's really, you know, is going to inhibit any sort of building in that property. You know, if we want the economic development in North Situate, we've got to get sewer up there. And as we talked about, that enterprise fund is losing money. You know, we have to add other people into the infrastructure that we already have to make revenue.
To generate money.
You know, the spaghetti lines, I know nobody knows a big fan of spaghetti lines, but we've already built the system. And that's 15,000 bucks that comes in without an expense. Every other system that we go out and build is not generating any revenue. It's just paying for the cost of the system. So I think that has to be in our financial plans as well. I know we talked about that last budget season. I don't know, we'll see shortly what's incorporated in that. But it's got to be a three-tier system in terms of development rates and using our existing infrastructure. So.
That's, and what I did is I just, I caught up with Brad and Karen and just went on planning, what do you guys see coming in the future? Just, just list everything for us and how many units it would potentially be. So this is, all these aren't necessarily, but they're potentials that are, that are out there that could be coming down our way. Any of the larger projects for tying into sewer, we had 50 Country Way, that was already tied into sewer, that whole facility there. So we look at each individual case. And any of the larger projects, obviously, be coming before the board. You know, we'll have to deal with the, with the project over at the Green Bush Station and the parking lot because technically, if we have a sewer line that runs up the side street there, which we discovered, they, they have access, you know, to sewer. And that's a, that's a pretty significant building.
And if they have access, then they have, then they, they get it?
They have the right. And by our sewer policy, they have a right to tie in. And I think that falls under Chapter 83 of Mass General Law. I didn't bring counsel, so I'll have to ask John, but it, there's a, there's a Mass General Law that, that we have to comply to with regards to that.
That's what I always thought it was back when we were doing the phases.
So that's, that's just where we are with, with the whole system. So did that help? Or are there any questions I could maybe answer to clarify anything? I tried to put it as, as straightforward as possible when I wrote this up.
Well, the only ones that we've approved is just Toll Brothers, right? What about 50 Country Way? Isn't that underway right now?
That's underway and that was approved by Wright. It was already sewer connected into it.
Right. So these are all, so I guess that's what I would want to do is separate, or are these all, this list on the top, Kevin, these are all?
Those are residential, the ones below are commercial.
Okay. No, yeah, I got that. But they're all approved? Or are they all either approved or by Wright? So are they, you know, good to go, guaranteed to connect to the system?
They have the potential to prove that they're connected, that they have sewer in, in front of them or in the vicinity that they could tie into.
Has some percentage that...
I haven't looked up each individual, well, I probably have, but I just can't remember off the top of my head. The Drew Project, there is sewer that runs up, runs up near there. 50 Countryway was already tied in, Toll Brothers, we already spoke about, 105 met it.
50 Countryway, tied in, how? Those, the new prefab units that are going up?
There's already sewer in those lots, so it was a sewer modification to the permit. So, what they will do is they'll pay a sewer fee for each unit that's there over and above, what was it prior?
Okay. So it almost sounds like to me, you know, pending the update from Hull Cohastin in January, we need to take a serious look at what else can be done.
I think we need to look at the regs too. I mean, I think we've, we may need some sort of caveat in there that says if we're past a certain percent, then buildings just don't get to tie in.
What if, yeah, what if we reach our moratorium?
Well, that's, that's one of the other things we can talk about, is doing a moratorium for that. I'd have to look into that and probably talk to council about it, and find out what we can and can't do with that.
Could you do that?
I could do that.
Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Kevin?
Thanks for the update. I mean, the only other fear that we have to worry about is the fact that the rolling average may continue to go up.
Right.
Because when we talked about this six months ago, the rolling average was 1.22. Now it's 1.33. So...
Right, and that kicked off, remember 2014, we're at 1.3. 2015, we went down to 1.256, and then 1.22, we were going in the right direction, and now we hit a couple storms. In the picture that I have, kind of down on 7th Ave illustrates how those storms affected us with the flooding, especially in that basin area around Oceanside Drive around 6 Ave. A lot of the drainage does go into the sewer.
Thanks, Kevin.
Kevin, thank you for putting together, thanks Will, for joining and putting that together. All right, next on the agenda, Nancy Durfee, sorry, looking at your presentation, reviewing the municipal vulnerability assessment presentation by Nancy. And Darcy Schofield, you're Darcy?
Hi, Darcy, welcome. Thank you.
Once you folks get set up, if you could just give your name.
We'll be around then.
What just happened?
I don't know.
Wiggle it. Nancy?
It just might be the connection. It's the connection, yeah.
The connection to the screen. Yeah, one. Which phone?
North. By your left hand.
Thank you, guys, sorry. Hi, I'm going to be down this end. I'll do the movement of the slides from right here. I want to thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come and give you a presentation on building a resilient Situate and climate vulnerability assessment and action plan. With me tonight I have Darcy Schofield, she's a senior environmental planner at MAPC, and she's really instrumental in helping us formulate the plan. While the town has been proactive in the face of climate change, much of the work to date focused on the coastal relative to sea level rise. This plan, however, will address how climate change will affect the entire community, including extreme heat, air and waterborne diseases, our salt marshes, wastewater, as we discussed now, will also be impacted as well, the water supply, and how that all will impact the residents, including some of our most vulnerable. Climate change is still relatively new in its recognition, and new data is constantly emerging, and with that, new concerns that we need to address and plan for. Also, this year, the Commonwealth has a new initiative to ensure all communities in the state have a municipal vulnerability assessment plan. By spring of 2018, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs will require all communities who wish to apply for grants across their agencies will need to have a certified plan. This includes the coastal resiliency grants, wetlands restoration grants, seawall dam and levee grants, amongst others. Many of the grants the community has been successful in attaining in the past. So, that gives you the introduction of why this is so important to the community, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Darcy, who will walk us through the planning efforts. Thank you, Darcy.
Sure, thank you for having me, I'm very excited to be here.
Let me know when you want me to...
Okay, so, so we are calling this plan Building a Resilient Situate because I think there's a lot of strength and force, and wonderful, great things that are going on that I've learned from your municipal staff and stakeholders in the community, and we decided this is a real hopeful way of thinking about Situate into the future and the change, face of changing climates, so you can switch. I think that Nancy did a great job describing why we are doing this. I can mention that I started MAPC in just August of 2017, but I do know we've been continuing to work with the town, starting in 2011, with the social coastal adaptation, and we're trying to continue to build upon that effort. So we're really excited to be working with Situate again, to go a little bit deeper and a little bit more comprehensive, so you can switch. So, and if any point in time you have any questions, feel free to interrupt and ask me. But, so what are we looking at in this climate change plan? We're organizing this in three different ways. So first, we're trying to, as Nancy mentioned, there's new data and science that comes out every day, and it's really hard to ascertain which is most relative, so I'm taking that on for the town to bring to you, what are some of the historic trends that we've seen in climate change in the past 50 years or 100 years, and what scientists are actually putting together today that think about what's going to be projected into the future? And we're looking at three different categories generally, sea level rise and storm surge, obviously, but also increased temperatures and how that affects our growing seasons, and changes in precipitation regimes, so more extreme weather events and how we might anticipate and plan for what that will look like into the future. So, once I compile all of that data, now I'm in the process of, I've just completed the process of evaluating Situate's vulnerability to those three categories, and we're really trying to focus on people, places, and how that will impact your, in some regards, not holistically, but in some capacity, your economy. And then, because we are, Situate's already in the face of dealing with storm surge and doing some great work to protect its shoreline, we do see that there are some challenges into the futures, and I want to help this town and coordinate and facilitate a process that provides incremental steps around policy, programs, and projects that we can take as Situate can become, build more resilient over time. We have time, we're not going to see seven feet of sea level rise for, you know, 75 years. So we have some time, and build some achievable steps that are financially feasible, but also ways to build a more cohesive community. Next slide. So, I just wanted to illustrate some of the folks that are providing some input into this plan, this is our steering committee, Nancy has organized this and managed this for us, and obviously, we're trying to get a real diverse sense of input from a variety of expertise, of also looking to continue to have conversations with private nonprofit stakeholders that are invested in the town. There was a public meeting, and just about a year ago, we're having another one tonight. We're hoping to do another public event in early January to try and, you know, gather more information from the public as this relates to them. And in terms of timing, as I mentioned, we're trying to wrap up a final draft by the end of this calendar year, we are on a bit of a tight timeframe, and looking to do some early adoption and early, do adoption in early 2018. I just wanted to mention that this is being funded by the district local technical assistance funds from MAPC as well. So, any questions on that process yet, before I go to the next slide? So, I did want to just present some preliminary results, had a lot of fun taking pictures of your beautiful town, which you'll see here today. So, I always like to start these conversations with some good news, and Situate actually has quite a bit of good news, and I think one of the things I wanted to highlight here today, to start you off with, is your tree canopy. So, 48.8% of your land area is covered by tree canopy, and that's a really critically important component of building climate resilience. So, that's avoiding 71.3 million gallons of stormwater runoff from entering into your system. So, that's both rainfall, or it's also, that's water that's being captured by leaves before it gets to the ground, as well as water being taken up by their roots, and that has a value of $637,000 per year. It also has tremendous impact on your air quality, so you can see there's some pretty significant air pollution mitigation as a result of this tree canopy, and I wanted to note that as a result of that, we're seeing that, one of our indicators for looking at climate change is public health, and what we're seeing today in Situate is that for asthma hospitalizations are less than half of what the state average are, so you're already doing a great job there. The value of that carbon storage is $31 million. We obviously want to highlight the significance of capturing carbon because our carbon emissions are directly related to the extent of our sea level rise, so this is an important component of the work that we're going to be looking at. So you're doing a great job, but right now, your tree canopy is sequestering 5,229 tons of carbon dioxide per year, and just to give you a note of comparison, a city like Chelsea, with a minimal tree canopy cover, very dense urban environment, is capturing about 78 tons of carbon dioxide per year, so you can feel really good about that. So according to the EPA, 2015 was the warmest year on record, and the last, from 2006 to 2015, was the warmest decade ever since we began recording temperatures. And, scientists today are projecting that by 2030, we could see between 20 to 40 days over 90 degrees, and by 2070 to 2100, we could see more than 90 days over 90 degrees. So that's a major...
Boston area, or?
In the Boston area, and as well as in the Commonwealth, so that's based on data that's from both of those. What, so what we're looking at, so that has pretty significant implications on our infrastructure, and more importantly, on our public health, and as we adjust to a new climate. Just to give you a comparison, 2030, that brings us to a climate that's more similar to Georgia's summers, by 2070, 2100, summers that are more like Alabama's. So we have a pretty, we have some interesting changes ahead of us, and so, we like to look at today, what you're looking at this map is an evaluation of what we call the urban heat island, so areas that are 1.25 degrees greater than the average during the, during the summer months, during the hottest times. So we're seeing a few places that are extremely, that are going to be really warm, I'm sure you've experienced that, but, and honestly, this is again, one of your strengths, because these areas are really isolated, a few, I think one of the more extensive areas is Hummerock, but trees don't naturally grow there anyway, so it is, it is interesting to note, and that's also one of your strengths, is that managing urban heat will be not as difficult, so you can switch. So, as you may recall, that Kleinfelder in 2013 did an analysis of sea level rise and storm surge for the town Situate, Duxbury, and Marshfield, and right now, working with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there is an even more sophisticated and advanced modeling process that's happening today that will give us an even better and closer, more refined look at sea level rise and storm surge in Situate. But, just also as a reminder, in the last 100 years, we've experienced 11 inches of sea level rise, and that's in part due to actual waters rising, but also in part due to subsidence. And what scientists are projecting is that that is going to accelerate into the future because of our carbon emissions and the warming climate. So, and by 2030, we're anticipating, scientists are anticipating about eight inches of sea level rise. By 2030, that brings us to 1.5 feet of sea level rise, and then 2070, we could go anywhere between six to seven feet. So, these are under extreme carbon emission scenarios, again, so bringing back to why carbon mitigation and capturing our carbon, reducing our emissions are really important. So I don't mention that to scare you, but to say, we, again, we have some time to sort of plan for that. But, one of the, one of the strengths that Situate does have is your 1,600 acres of salt marshes. So in addition to your seawalls, your vetments, this is also one of your first-line defenses, and it's, they're significant and important. So not only are they capable of enduring some significant storm surge and attenuating some of that high wave energy, they're also helping to create clean water, they're supporting your commercial shellfish and fish habitat, and so they're accustomed to frequent inundation. However, we're starting to see some, there's some preliminary analysis that's starting to indicate that there is some marsh deterioration, so these are one of those things that we would want to continue to evaluate, and what this map is looking at today, that you're seeing here, is the extent of existing salt marshes and the darker blues, and the lighter blues are areas that, a coastal adaptation analysis that was performed by the state and the nature conservancy is illustrating where some of those areas might need to be reserved to allow the marsh to migrate.
When you say marsh deterioration, what does that, how does that, what does that look like? Is it because of pollution?
So...
Is it because of...
Yeah, so, where, so, as I mentioned, salt marshes are accustomed to be, and they need to be inundated with the tides, but if they're more consistently submerged, that's when you start to see salt marsh deterioration. So, though, I would always recommend having a more in-depth analysis of the science, and CZM is actually doing some of that work right now, coastal zone management with the state. We're starting to see a migration and a change in the species composition to illustrate that there is some marsh migration happening because of sea level rise, there's some competition happening with invasives, and that's potentially a combination of nutrient loading from storm water, and also from other invasive species as well.
I'd just like to answer that.
Sure.
So, as you drive along over the bridge, and you look out to the marsh, and you look at the edge, you can see it's calving off, so basically, it's big chunks...
Foster Road?
Route 3A. If you're coming over the bridge in 3A, because that's where you see the greatest marsh visual, just look at the edge, and you can see that there are large chunks of peat dropping off into the, into the river, and it's really just eroding off. Sea level rise is a contributing factor to that, but there's also species that are overhabitated and don't have enough predators, and we also have nutrient loading as an issue, so. Those, I believe Sarah Grady is also taking a look at the North-South River, and how that erosion is faring for North Situate, for, I'm sorry, I heard North Situate, so...
South Situate.
South Situate, along the marshes areas, yes, sorry.
Before we get off track a little bit, you know, I always thought it was, your answer was going to be, you know, boat traffic, because they make you go slow around those areas, but...
I don't believe that hasn't, that boat traffic has anything to do with it, but I have heard that as an excuse, and I don't believe it.
So we can speed down the North River. So, but why not dredge, when they dredge? Why not take that material and put it back on the banks?
That's a really good question. They are doing some type of, what they call, like a thin layer, veneer, of that type of material that's just in the river and put it back out on the marsh. I'm not sure how successful that's been, it's being done in Maryland, has a large project, I'm waiting to see how that goes, and also, there is one in Rhode Island as well, that I have gone down to see, I just have to go back to see how well the grasses are able to grow through that thin veneer of material, once they've placed it on. And then that's just a continuing, you know, you have to continue that process because the water keeps rising, and so, but I do see there are some measures of initiatives taking place.
So, on the boat traffic, I would concur that that wouldn't be affecting the salt marsh, however, you do have eelgrass populations that are submerged, and those are really critically important to your water quality and for a healthy marine ecosystem, which supports the salt marsh as well, and those can be susceptible to boat traffic. The good news is the Situate's eelgrass, meadows have remained relatively stable in the last 20 years, so you're in good shape there, from what I recall.
Yeah, we have some in the...
So we can switch, yep. So, one of the things, again, so I'm just doing some touchpoints, this report goes into much more significant detail on a much broader point, and in fact, even just this morning was finishing up looking at some of your historical assets and their vulnerability to climate change, which I thought was pretty interesting as well. But, as a coastal community, obviously, solidarization of your drinking water is one of the things that we like to take a closer look at. So, what you're looking at here in this map is your aquifer, as well as the soil hydrogroup. So, I'll just be very brief and say, we have some good news here. Although with sea level rise, we do anticipate that that is going to have an impact on your fresh groundwater level, and the barrier between those two, the sea level rise, the water that's underneath, and your fresh water, we do anticipate that that gets smaller, there's only so much area that the aquifer can go. However, the soils between the sea level, the seawater and the groundwater are very poorly drained, which means it creates a more impervious layer between the two of those. So, I'm not a hydrologist, and I certainly would recommend, you know, having some further studies, but our sort of preliminary assessment looks like we wouldn't see any saltwater intrusion heading into the aquifer, although there's some areas that you want to be paying attention to. The challenges that we are looking for with Situate's drinking water are obviously some supply issues with various precipitation regimes, obviously, in 2016, Situate already had some supply... Obviously, in 2016, Situate already had some supply issues. So those are some of the things that we're going to want to think about into the future, as well as potential solidization of the wellheads that are along the coast. And although I don't have that map up here, we do have a couple of wells that are in some flood zones. So those are going to be some areas of concerns that we'll point out. And then finally, I'm actually probably just going to leave this slide. I think you got quite a bit more information that I took copious notes from your DPW director. But certainly, we have some concerns about wastewater in flood zones. You're already experiencing overloads, as you've mentioned. You have pump stations that are going to be susceptible to flooding. So we will lay out some of those vulnerabilities as well. So that kind of concludes. Again, just want to provide sort of preliminary analysis. Happy to have conversations with you in greater detail. My contact information is up there, or certainly to meet with you and Nancy at any time.
Well, thank you, Darcy. That was great, and I look forward to the full report. I imagine that you're working with Nancy, and Nancy's connecting all the dots with, you know, the coastal adaptation, engineering, and these results, and just connecting all the dots and making sure we put forward the best solution to preserve our resources.
Great.
We've been very fortunate to have the technical assistance from MAPC to finalize this plan. They worked with us in 2011. It was very coastal oriented, which is yay. But this covers the entire community. I feel like it's a good thing for us to have completed, and it will show us some of the areas where we have some vulnerabilities and where we need to, you know, have some attention paid and also celebrate some of the successes of the community as well because we certainly have a lot to offer and it's certainly, we have some ways to combat it in other areas. So I think it'll be good, and the action plan will certainly help us. You know, whenever you do a plan, the action plan is actually the piece that, you know, anyone will look at when they're going to review you for anything. So it's a statement as to what the community can accomplish. So I'm looking forward to the action plan part of this as well.
That would be one of my questions, if it would assist us in future grant applications, okay?
Yeah. As I mentioned earlier, if we don't have the plan and adopt it by spring of 2018, then we would not be eligible for grants from EEOEA. So we definitely want to make sure that this is done, and we'll be on track. I'm sure we'll be there. We've done a lot of work already that we can show, and I could have gone forth and tried to convince EEA that we were already well-prepared, but I felt this piece was extremely important to complete because it covered the rest of the community, which we hadn't really looked at. So it made more sense to just go through this process and then ask for the approval.
Any questions? No, this is a tremendous amount of work. I can't wait to see the whole study.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
When this is done, I, one thing we should think about next year is maybe doing like a forum for the town going through like this. I mean, there's some other reports with sea rise. I mean, Saturday or something, just open up to the public and say, listen, these are the various reports we've been going through, and let's get, you know, people to understand what exactly is going on. So that doesn't get shelved, or people are going to think, you know, keep it going, keep it in the forefront.
That's right. I think that it would be a very, a very good idea to show to the community. And Saturdays and Sundays, when people are around, are a good time to do that. I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy my favorite.
Thank you, Nancy. That's good.
All right, next on the agenda is a discussion and vote for a library trustee appointment to fill the vacancy that was created by Karen's election to the Board of Selectment. So Nancy, is Nancy here? Nancy Versekis?
Yes.
Hi Nancy. Did you want to come up? I don't know if anybody from the Board of Trustees wants to do an introduction. You want to come forward? Yeah, come on, come on forward, Carol. So I understand that the Board of Trustees is moving Nancy forward for recommendation to fill the vacancy. Am I correct in summarizing? Okay. So hi Nancy.
Hi, yes, how are you?
Nice to see you. If you could just give your name and address for the board and for the record.
It's Nancy Versekis, 118 Gannett Road.
Okay. So we appreciate you stepping forward.
Thank you.
I think the vacancy to be filled is just to the next election cycle, am I correct? Or throughout your whole term?
I was confused by some of the languages that brought forward, so I don't know if we got clarity on that. Did, I'd asked the trustees if they did because they looked...
Sure. Kevin?
I believe it is just until the next town election.
Okay. All right, great. And just name and address for the record for Lorraine.
It's Kevin Carroll, 48th Avenue Avenue, Chair of the Library Trustees.
Thank you, Kevin. So Nancy, if you wouldn't mind, just two seconds, little introduction of yourself. I know you've served in the past, but just for members that may not remember or...
Professionally, most of my career has been with the Situate Public Schools. I've lived in Situate since mid-1970s. I served for three terms as a library trustee. I was in interim in 2013, and I'm sort of like the ghost of Christmas past, I'm back again. But it's a special place for me. It's just, so it's an honor to do it.
Well, we appreciate it, and we certainly understand the need for interims and how rare they are out there when we have vacancies. We've experienced that ourselves, so we appreciate you stepping forward.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Nancy? I mean, I've known Nancy from years, years back.
Yes.
Just thank you.
You're welcome. Your reputation precedes you. I'm so happy that you can step forward to take the position. Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion?
I think you might just have to do a roll call.
It's a roll call.
Okay, what do we need to do? Okay, thank you, Lorraine. So do I have a motion?
We have to approve the interim appointment of Nancy Versekis to the vacancy on the library trustee until the 2018 annual town election or until another person is qualified.
A motion by Mr. Biniani, second by Mr. Harris, and a roll call.
Okay, so first I'll do a roll call vote for the library trustees. Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Is Mr. Arachi here?
He's not here.
Ms. Carol Sullivan Hanley?
Yes.
Sheila Kustus?
Yes.
Elizabeth Holthouse?
Yes.
Are there any other library trustee members here? Okay, great. And that's the majority of the board.
Yes.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen, Mar, Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Mr. Danighy?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
All in favor? I think we need to say aye, right? Oh, and that's it? That's it. I'm sorry.
Aye, aye.
Thank you so much for stepping forward. We appreciate it. And thank you, Board of Trustees, for coming in.
Yes.
Running for, such a great candidate. All right, have a happy Thanksgiving all.
Thank you.
Good night, Sheila.
All right. Next on the agenda is to award a contract to Roach Field, the parking lot improvements. Dan and Sean, how are you this evening?
Good evening. Adam Chair, members of the board.
Sean?
How's everyone? See you.
Sean McCarthy with the Engineering Division here in Situate with Kate Fenway from the Recreation Commission, who forefronted this project a couple of years ago. About that, yes. So jointly, we prepared an RFP for permitting and design engineering services for an improvement to the existing parking lot at Roach Field on Beaver Dam Road, as well as a new lot to the rear of the outfield, exiting or entering both off of Beaver Dam. Out of the six RFPs that were sent out, we received two responses. Not sure why, it's a nice, small, little project for somebody unless it's just timing.
Well, is that why, is that why one of them overbid it? They have to do it?
Yeah, that's...
Sort of like...
Yeah, big discrepancy there. And we, after we opened the price proposals, we went through them to see if they were including something the other one wasn't, really making sure that they were comparing apples and apples.
So for the record, we have one that's $70,000 and one that's 26.
Correct.
Big difference.
Yeah, so they'll go through the whole stormwater analysis, existing condition survey, design, permitting through the planning board. We've met with conservation, they don't see the need to come before them. The resource areas are down by the tracks. This will be up top on the, where it's actually grassed already.
So is this for the full scope of the project, or is this Phase 1, just the parking lot?
This is for the full scope of the project, which includes resurfacing the front, or redesigning the front, and additional parking in the back outfield.
Down by where the batting cage used to be?
It's where the batting cages are today.
Will it stay there, the batting cage?
The batting cages are going to be moved towards left center field.
Gotcha.
Outside the fence.
Oh, I see. Okay, great.
How much did we get at town meeting for that, Dan? I forgot.
Just under $90,000.
Wow, we're doing 26.
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
For the design. Well, that's for design. That's the design.
Oh, this is just for the design?
That's not construction.
Gotcha, okay.
So as part of this, they'll put together the documents to construct it. That'll go out to bid for a contractor.
Is that what we estimated, that it would be about 25% for design?
What I had budgeted was with a 15% contingency, $23,000.
So pretty close.
It's close. I was hoping under 20.
What do you think, all likelihood of getting, you know, a half a dozen companies to bid on the project itself, and how will the timing be? Will it be spring, summer?
Yeah, we were talking about that, only to have portions of it done before the season started, exactly. Although I don't want the contractor to start and leave, but if he could complete the rehabilitation to the front lot, then he could spend his time in the outfield and he wouldn't interfere with the games, other than losing the batting cages.
He should have a good hitter.
Well, he's going to be on the outfield because it's not accessible until, you're right.
It's a good time of year. Hope to have this whole design and permitted, you know, January, February, put it out early spring when people are looking for little projects like this to take on. They, we seem to get better prices. I know we do with our water improvement projects. In the winter, they're looking, no, granted, those, scale is different, but...
Dan, you've been involved for a long time. Are you willing to like, see it through?
Yes, that was my plan.
Appreciate it. I know Tony would say a lot more than I would, but thank you very much for everything. I know, like Sean said, it's been a couple of years, been your project. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan or Sean?
No, just to reiterate what Sean said, Dan, you've put a ton of time into this. It's been, you know, kind of a longer road than you may have expected, but we're there. And a lot of thought went into it. You know, this isn't just to improve a baseball field. I think one of the main thoughts Dan had behind it is the safety issue that was involved in the parking, in the parking lot there. So it's, you know, it will add parking spots to the facility, but it's really going to make it a much safer facility. And the police always complain because people park illegally on First Parish Road. So I think it's a really good, good project.
And I think it'll help the neighborhood that's behind the field as well. And that's where a lot of the complaints came from.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Motion?
Will the Board of Selectmen award the contract for engineering, design, and permitting services for Roach Baseball Field parking improvements to Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors Incorporated for $26,000?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Danighy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. See you in the spring for the construction.
You know what, maybe we can put you at the beginning of the agenda.
Yeah. And you raise a good point. I want to go out of order again, if we will, since we have just one committee and board appointment to discuss for the Public Building Commission, and we have Jesse and Mrs. Holthouse here. So if you want to come, is that okay with the board?
Sure.
Yes, want to come forward so we can get you folks out of here and... Hi Jesse, how are you?
Good.
I'm great.
Happy almost Thanksgiving.
I know. So just for the record, name and address?
Elizabeth Holthouse, 136 First Parish.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So Jesse, you're before us again to request a replacement due to the election of Ms. Canfield to the Public Building Commission to represent the library.
That's a much tougher.
Okay. Thank you for stepping forward. I know you're currently a member of the library trustees, so any issue with being able to attend the meetings?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Holthouse?
No.
No. Thank you. Big shoes to fill.
Yes, I know that.
Well, I think it's excellent because I think having representation on that committee right now is really important. So thank you, Elizabeth.
We should hold the goal line now.
Yeah. Exactly.
And take all the credit.
All right. We have our...
I'll move to appoint Elizabeth Holthouse to the Public Building Committee as the user member for the library project for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second. Move by Mr. Danighy, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. There you go. Thank you. Thanks so much. I know. Happy Thanksgiving. Sorry to keep you waiting. We will go up one to all business discussion and vote to set the annual town meeting and town election dates. So Nancy, I don't know, did you want to, I know you were looking at your schedule with regards to the board and committee appointments. So Lorraine, Michelle and I looked at the draft budget calendar that we put together, and we did have the annual town meeting on there for April 9th, which is what is called for by the general bylaw. So that was the question that was at the last meeting. So that is fine for the annual town meeting date, and if there's a special on the annual town meeting as well. And then the town election would be six Saturdays after that.
Okay, it's fine. Which will be May 19th, right? The election will be May 19th. That'll, I don't think we have any, we, so I have a conflict on election day, but that's okay. My daughter's graduating from college out of town that day.
Can we change it?
But we kind of looked at it, and I don't think we can.
Yeah, it, it, we ran into that problem when we had Memorial Day, and we're not hitting a holiday. So we can, you know, we can make an inquiry of town council and see what that inquiry comes back with. Certainly, if you wanted to move town meeting, the general bylaws don't really allow for town meeting to move that much. We ran into that problem before.
Two, two years ago or something, there was something we tried to move.
We ran into a holiday.
If it's on a religious holiday?
Yeah, if it's on a religious holiday, we can move. Because we talked about...
Does it have to be six Saturdays or within six Saturdays?
The general bylaw says it has to occur six Saturdays after that annual town meeting.
Exactly, six, not less, not more.
Yeah, because we ran into that problem before, and we tried to move it backward or move it forward, and we couldn't back it up.
Right.
We can certainly, you know, if you wanted to move town meeting back a week, the, the general bylaws call for it to be on the second. It doesn't have any language saying that you, to, to do it, it doesn't have any language saying you can't do it, it just specifies when it is. So we could certainly get a council opinion on it and bring it back to your next meeting. It's not going anywhere, so we could certainly do that if you want.
I would move it to that Saturday of Memorial Day.
The 12th?
No, so if they moved it.
26th.
Oh, if you moved it back, I don't think you can move it forward. Mass general law, the supersede, that you can't move it up, but you can move it back. Because I checked on it with Kathy Kern before he came in.
So we couldn't go on 5/12 instead of 5/19?
Um, I don't know about that. That I would love to ask, if we can do it within five weeks.
Certainly do.
That I would love to look at. We can't move town meeting forward, but we can move it back a week. But because Mass General Law supersedes our bylaw, we, we can only delay it, we can't move it up.
And your conflict is with the election?
The 19th, yeah.
Right, okay.
The election.
Let's look into it, see what.
We can certainly make it through council, yes, absolutely.
Since, um, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We'll table that.
So we'll table that for this evening. Next on the agenda is to discuss 2018 board and selectmen meeting dates. So I know we have that in our packet, it's a draft list. We actually have a printout, but we don't really have to, it's just for our notation, right?
Yeah, I already, I just wanted to give you a draft. Everyone's, everyone's always asking me for the 2018 dates. We don't typically approve it until December, so I wanted you to have an opportunity to do it ahead of time.
Okay.
You know, we can firm it up at the next meeting. Particularly, one of the things I just noticed is Monday, on the line, it should say pre-meeting annual town meeting. And then Tuesday, April 6th, 17th should be regular meeting.
Oh yeah, just to correct that.
Just fix that. It's just a draft you can take a look at. Probably six o'clock meeting of the budgets.
It's cold, Brian.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with 6:00 PM meetings?
Yes.
During the budget?
I think if they need to, but I don't think, I mean, this is just a, it's just a holding thing now.
Yeah, you can certainly change them as you go along. I mean, typically, these have been meetings that go till after 11 o'clock at night. Otherwise, I would put it at 6:00. I did based on my experience.
I turned into a pumpkin.
That was because of some of the.
Unless you change what you do with the meetings, which with the new town administration could be.
Yeah, so we can just double check.
It should be fine.
We're going to blow through these budgets pretty quickly, I can tell you that.
You know, one of the things that was a concern is the February, December is school vacation, the April is April school vacation, but there were rarely no other dates.
Well, those are big problems.
We'll have to look at those, yeah.
Yeah, those, we can't.
But they were the same last year too. They were in the February vacation, they were in the spring school vacation.
So why don't folks get back to us if you have vacation plans during those school weeks?
Okay. As I said, it's no different than it was last year or the year before.
And we met, we met February and April vacation, I can recall.
I don't think we, we met April vacation?
I like the fact that they're every other week and not every week.
This one's a.
That's a, that's a change.
These are every week.
I like that, huh?
What are we looking at?
January 9th or 23rd, then.
In March.
Keep going.
March and in Holthouse, March.
This one on there, that whole March.
There's four meetings in March.
It's town, because it's a.
Did we have four meetings in March last year?
Yes, for the four years I've been here, we have.
When we go through the budget, ever since I've been on the board, we have, maybe, maybe that's something you did years ago.
Well, what happened traditionally was we had it every, and Sean, you'd know better and know more than I, but we used to have every other, every other Tuesday and then occasionally with the budgets, we'd, we'd add one more because we weren't able to get through it. And then we tended to kind of push into going almost every weekend, or not weekend.
Every week.
Every Tuesday for it. So I think it's just a question.
As, as we needed it, but I remember doing it on a Saturday morning.
So you know what I would do as well, Lorraine, is I would reach out to Jim. I mean, he's open to any questions because he may run his budgetary process in a different manner. So maybe just tell him, give him a ring, tell him what the, you know.
Yeah, we could certainly send him the draft.
He's got a.
We have.
Okay.
And I could certainly send him the draft selectmen.
So is April 17th school vacation week?
Yes.
So can you just make that the 24th?
Uh, I'd have to take, I'd have to take a look at it, actually.
Okay, well, that would be definitely one to look at.
One to switch.
And which one's February, the 20th?
Let me just take a look.
Third week, February, Tony typically, you're looking at a calendar now?
Nineteenth, so it would be the 20th.
Put consent.
Nineteenth is.
February 20th, so that is definitely a vacation, so that one's going to be, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that, John?
February 20th is the other vacation.
You don't do vacations.
The problem is February 20th was, you know, then we went into the 27th and the following week you had a meeting April 6th.
March 6th, but you're right.
We had March 6th.
I think maybe what we should do is, we're starting the budget on the 9th.
But I want you to take a look at it and see, you know, if you've got any plans over those vacations, we can certainly move things around and.
So you got, I have plans on me for vacation, yeah.
All right, so we'll move the, the April 1.
We're not going to be here.
I've been looking at that, that one to move to the 24th.
Okay, great.
And if anybody, if you, you know, need to move to February, then we go into back-to-back meetings situation.
Right. But that may be what we need to do if folks are away, so we can figure that out. Okay, and let's just make sure this, you know.
I just wanted to give you a chance to preview.
Yeah. No, we appreciate that. Thank you Lorraine.
I don't remember meeting six weeks in a row.
Okay. Moving on to other business, Mr. Clerk, correspondence?
We don't have any, do we?
There's some correspondence in there. There's one, um.
I'm trying to get to mine.
There's three pieces of correspondence. I didn't see any either.
There's the paper ones.
Is that the bottom?
Ah.
887, one is, you know, from Patricia McKenzie.
Oh, that's right.
One is the link, the selectmen.
I'm trying to get to it, hang on. Come on.
And one is in front of you, Hummer Rock.
That I passed out to.
All right, first one. Boarder member, to the members of the Board of Selectmen and Town Employees, thank you all so much for the gorgeous crystal ball engraved with the town seal, my name and dates and service. I could not imagine a better gift or memento, memento to commemorate my time in Situate. I will value it and my time there will all, what's that say? All?
With all of you.
With all of you.
The last month.
All the good things and best wishes to you in whatever the future brings. Fondly, Tricia. And P.S., thanks for the pens. There is on November 22nd, tomorrow through the 26th, the HBIA 24th Annual, I guess it's the Hummer Rock Holidays, and that's the Hummer Rock Beach Improvement Association and the South Hummer Rock Civic Association. It's Wednesday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Thanksgiving weekend, they have different events. Wednesday, there's a pre-annual Thanksgiving Bash at the Voyage featuring a country music star Suzanne McNeil. Friday, there's a holiday shopping all weekend, Hummer Rock gifts. Enjoy have prices, appetizers and drinks, specials at the Voyage from 2:00 to 6:00. Saturday, there's hay rides by the sea from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Voyage. There's Victorian Christmas carols and some other events. And Sunday, they also have Santa Claus arriving by a fire truck. So if you're interested, head on down to Hummer Rock. It's a nice little event that they're sponsoring. Um, let's see, and that's it.
There's one more from the Town of Lakeville that I think you just referenced and I think you have to read the whole thing, that we were copied on. What about that?
Um, so, this is a very three, a long three-page letter from the Selectmen of Lakeville who apparently have contacted the governor and they CC'd us or carbon copied us on it. It is in reference to the MBTA who evidently, I don't know why I'm reading this, to be honest with you, it deals with Lakeville.
Just so we have a letter from them.
I think they're just, I think basically what they're doing is just notifying us that they seem to jump the list for solar panels going onto their parking lots and they're just advising the towns that were a part of that. That was my gist of the letter. Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, no, 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 it's fine. You don't have to read all three pages.